With all the steps, all right.
Uh, now you're good to go. Thank you. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the public hearing board Thursday, February 2013, 2025, we held at the select board here and move here at Town Hall. As we know, it's all being held on Zoom and wherever else and you can see it on Facebook tomorrow. At 6:30 tonight, we have a continuing public hearing.
It's me, I'm on the booth.
Oh, we had to approve your jacket. Yes, the boss of your jacket, there was second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Louise Allen Baker.
Hi, I'm.
Okay, now let's go. The continued public here, the zoning amendment for the annual town meeting of 2025. Just to let everybody know, I, I, I read so much stuff about this. This Affordable Homes Act is mandated by the state. It is a law. We need to pass something in its permanent housing. It is not for people to have short-term rentals. That is not the intent of the law. Okay, so we can start off with that. Okay.
All right, so um, after the, the regs came out final on January 31st, they were published in the Register. They're final, so we, we went through our bylaw and we made some changes uh, based on the final regs and a memo that um, from Town Council. Um, Town Council's comments, so um, just all this information was posted on the website, so it's been available to the public. You know, we, some of the big changes were to that single-family home and put principal dwelling. We took out the definition of addition. We took out things that um, we took out some things we had in there for special permits. We deleted them because at seeing the final regs, it's not, it's not going to be possible. Um, so we, those are, those are the changes we made. Um, we have changed one to specifically call up protected use accessory dwelling. But you know, everything in here right now is what Town Council believes that we are allowed to have in the bylaw right now. Um, Town Council has been trying to speak to the Attorney General's office and uh, hasn't quite got there, got there yet. Um, well, they haven't returned his call. Um, so we're still waiting for that for some final clarification. So and after we take, you know, whatever testimony we take tonight, Town Council has asked us to continue the public hearing until February 27th. So that, that gives them another two weeks and hopefully in which to connect with the Attorney General's office and get hopefully some further clarification on um, items in the bylaw that we still have questions on. There were some changes in the final regs that were put in there totally out of the blue from the ground. So, um, you know, we're doing, we're do- we're doing our best right now.
I think the public needs to be aware that we were told about this in August. Let's just wait, it was called back in from vacation to pass this bill. Um, supposedly it's going to help our housing crisis. Uh, I was told last night by a builder that the minimum cost of building an accessory dwelling unit is somewhere around $315,000 now. So, um, and although the governor challenges it is by right, it is by right within our own bylaws. And so it is not by right really, really. That's why we need to pass this legislation at town meeting. Do we have any comment from the board? Now.
I don't have it, is it?
Rebecca is a lawyer. Richard. Ms. Burdley, Ms. Burke. Anybody in the audience have anything in public, in front of you, has anything to say? Don't be shy, yes. Name and address, please.
I always like to go last, but I'll go first.
Okay.
Uh, Steve Bjorkman, 861 Main Street, Norwell, but obviously they do a lot of work constituent. Most people know what I do. Uh, I spent about three hours yesterday in a seminar for building inspectors specifically on ADU units. That was given by Jonathan Silverstein, who works for Mr. Babowski. And uh, there's a couple eye opener things that happened at that particular meeting. Uh, we don't require site plan review for single-family dwelling. We can't require it for an ADU. That'll get thrown out. If we have a special permit for an ADU where you're being more lenient than what the state regulations are, you can put in whatever you want. So site plan, you can have further setbacks, anything like that, but a protected ADU, if you don't require site plan approval for a single family, it's not going to go through for an ADU.
Because the bill that is right here in final regulations given to us, it tells you on the whatever, now this is site plan review, it tells us right then if you're implying you have a site plan review. So you know, we've been talking on both sides of our mouth here, so it's, this is so distracting to us. We've spent almost every hour of every day dealing with this.
Okay.
I don't counsel disagree with you.
Let me, let me see one thing. Please, please don't get upset that we've already get up. If you find out that this is true, that's great, okay? But if you find out that you can't have a site plan review, please don't yell at me for giving you the information.
I'm not lying at you. I'm just saying.
Okay.
It, it's amazing that every webinar we go to, it seems like it's, it's different to whoever to give talk.
I've, I've been to a lot of them and that's why I went to the one the other day because it was given by, strictly by an attorney who had been in contact with uh, the Housing Department.
I tell you, I asked that question yesterday at Town Council because the building commissioner came back and said, your bylaws are illegal. I said, I, I don't believe it is. And our Town Council is applying right now that what we have is fine and that's why they're trying to get in touch with the Attorney General's office. There's some interpretations based on the final regulations. So, we have to listen to our attorney, not some other attorney.
So what else did he have to say, Steve?
Uh, they got into a lot of stuff about basements, what's going to classify as a basement in gross floor area. I mean, some of the other comments, and you know, I did go through this with you guys before, so this is stuff that came up again. With due respect for Karen, there's things that change when you're very into this. Uh, they got into, or he got into, I'll say this because again, it's one attorney uh, who was basically teaching all the building inspectors in southeastern Massachusetts, okay? Uh, they got into the ownership of these and I was surprised, actually Chris and I had chatted a while ago about whether these things could be sold off as condominiums. He absolutely said that zoning has nothing to do with the ownership of a building and these things will be, will be sold off as condominiums once they're done. Which again, it's explicitly, okay, okay, I'm just giving you the information. Okay, so whether I'm right or I'm wrong, I'm just doing this to try to help, okay? He explicitly said that zoning does not have to do with ownership. And we've got some attorneys, they, they may apply on the same thing, okay? If you have a two-family home, you can sell it as two condominiums, correct?
Yes, you can.
Don't have to go to the planning board, don't have to go to zoning board, don't have to talk to the town. Okay, that's what can happen with the ADUs is what was explained to me yesterday. Okay, I, I hate that. Okay, I, I'm with you guys. I think it's absolutely ridiculous that that can happen, but that's what was said at the meeting. I said that was the whole thing, the whole purpose of it. And he said it doesn't because the sole purpose is to just provide housing. Doesn't matter how it's owned, it's to provide housing.
An accessory dwelling unit is accessory to the primary use on the site.
I wish you were in there.
And so therefore.
I wish you were there.
It has to be in common ownership. And that's, we're putting that in our bylaw. And that is a question our Town Council will be asking. It's an accessory use. It's not a new use.
So if you don't think that, I don't think they're making this stuff as they go along.
Well, I, I mean, I understand the whole concept behind all of this, but they, it never should have come out as fast as it did, okay?
Right.
And again, do respect to everybody that's in the room, okay? There's things that are definitely wrong with it. There's things, I disagree with it. I agree with you on some of the stuff. The only statement I'm really trying to make is that this site plan review, if it comes out that you can't do it by site plan review, and again, I'm not an attorney. But in my opinion, you guys are trying to do things that are actually more lenient in some cases than the state. I think when you do that, you can require anything you want by special permit or site plan review or anything like that. But it's the protected stuff that's coming out of the state regulations that I'm just being cautious for you guys to say that stuff may end up getting thrown out. And Karen's right. One attorney can say one thing, one attorney can say something else. Um, I've heard, I've heard all sides of it. But I can only tell you the presentation I saw yesterday was probably the, the cleanest presentation. There were specific questions, just like Karen was saying, we asked that question, we asked that question. They were all asked at that meeting. And it was an eye opener. I mean, it went for hours. Not like the one that they would give into everybody we've seen a few times, okay? This one was really in-depth, so I'm just saying you may find the answers prior to having to, to deal with it. So if you keep it open, that's great and I hope he gets the answers. I'm just saying be prepared if those comes, they come back not agreeing with Town Council to still try to get the special permit stuff in. I think you guys are trying to do some good things with the stuff that is over and above what the state is requiring you to do. And the same thing, I was in Norwell last night. They're rewriting their bylaw, going through the same stuff. And I sat there with their Town Council and he doesn't understand the stuff that's going on. I don't think that anybody fully understands what's going to come out of this. So I'm just saying be prepared if that's the case.
There was an um, magazine that just came out, Social Living, and I gave it to Karen.
Yeah, I went through it, yeah.
Okay, one of the items, one of the paragraphs, if you have a Bullman, that's who Mary Lee is, was saying that this is for more healing, for affordable, this is about affordable housing. And I will sit here and say, no, it is not. It has nothing to do with affordable housing. Nothing. And they, in this article, said that we need to come up with 10,000 more units.
For the whole state.
For the whole state.
Yes, absolutely.
And that in and of itself, when Boston has dollars after schools. We'll figure.
Boston's not subject to this. They have their own zoning in Boston.
They have their own zoning.
Yeah, they have their own zoning. Yes. That's terrible.
They have city zoning. And these were more, places like Cambridge and stuff like that, they can build on little tiny lots anyways.
You just see the Cambridge, you did.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's a blood structure, yeah. So that's, that is that lawyer's interpretation. That's what I want to say. And, and I'm going to tell you what I told our old lawyer, which is they work for us. And if it doesn't pass and they want to sue us, they go right ahead. But we have worked very hard and we have a really great accessory dwelling in the bylaw that really is far more aggressive than anybody else in the state. Because we don't just allow your family to live there, we allow anybody to live there. So we will see at the end of the day what washes out. I, I, I don't, it, it will be a mystery until town meeting.
Other towns still allow sales, I mean, not sales, but other people to live in the houses as well.
Not, not many, yeah, not a whole lot.
Most of them are modifying the bylaws, are creating new bylaws right now. Again, I'm not against your bylaw, believe me. I, I, I've spent a lot of time trying to go through it. But this was definitely sidetracked yesterday and now it's, no one knows what's going to happen.
Did you hear at the same meeting?
Unfortunately, I didn't, it was one I missed.
Could you tell us who else?
Chris Garcia, 119 St. George. Um, so Steve will remember at two meetings ago where EOHLC was at a meeting, at the Saco meeting. And she was asked about the, the ownership question. And this just goes to show how different the information is. She said that is not, that's not the state's intent. And she said that in another webinar, the day after, you know, the same question came up. So the condo thing is not their intent. I know that the argument has been made that it could happen. But you know, I think we should stick with our common ownership and let that be flat out in a different level.
The thing that concerns me about common ownership is the fact that who's the common owner doesn't have to live there.
It's not, and that's going to be outside of our, our entity.
I understand, but I think it's awful though.
That's something that.
And you understand why that's happening? Okay, because there's a lot of towns that have these bylaws, but not a lot of people are using it. And they figure if they get investors involved, they're going to buy single-family homes, turn them into two of these units and do what they may, but they're going to create the housing. But that's at this level right here. There are a couple things, if I can, uh, that also came out of that meeting that were specific questions. And in your definitions of accessory dwelling, uh, unit attached and detached, uh, you specify single-family home in that definition and there were a number of questions asked.
We changed that. Do you have the latest version that was on the website?
This is, no, this was just that yesterday.
On the website, we changed that, we changed, we took off single-family home.
Well, I, I picked this up yesterday, so. Again, don't shoot the messenger. I'm trying to help you guys if I can. But what was brought up was they did say if you had a duplex, as a matter of right, you can still be able to have an accessory dwelling unit. So I don't.
And they, they didn't put that in, they put that in, it's in here, so that's in here.
It's changing hourly, everybody.
All right, I, there's one spot I missed, one spot I missed.
They did, no, it's only.
You missed it?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm sorry. It's one spot, but then we can go on to accessory dwelling unit within on the next page. And we can find another spot that was missed. So please don't shoot me. I'm trying to help you guys, please. Another comment that I would have is because this gross floor area is going to become an issue if people are getting really close to what that limit's going to be. The state does have a definition of the gross floor area. I would suggest that we also put that in here on your definitions because the accessories measure from outside wall to outside wall and the state measures from the inside of the outside wall to the inside of the outside wall. So in our bylaw, we'll have one definition, but if you want to do it for ADUs, make, I would make it consistent with what the state uses for ADUs because that's their law.
We're using what the building code says. That's what we're using right now. We've always used what the building code says.
Does the building code say from the inside?
No, it says from the outside.
Okay, so the ADU law by the state is you measure from the inside of the wall. You guys can do what you want. I'm just telling you what the definition says. If you haven't seen it, it's measured from the inside of the exterior wall. So the other definitions you took directly out of their law and they do have one there, I would suggest that you do it according to the state. They also get into how you calculate placement area for gross floor area as well. And that gets extremely confusing and that's going to actually be partially up to the building inspectors, how that's interpreted. Whether there's access from inside the building or access only from the exterior of the building. Again, but that's, I don't think that's a planning board issue. I think that's going to be determined by the builder.
Anybody else in the room?
Okay, go back.
Um, I see that we have some of these here raised on line. Would you allow these folks, please?
Sorry, am I unmuted?
No, you're all set. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair and through you to the members. Um, yeah, this is evolving and crazy, I know. So I appreciate everyone, appreciate everyone's attention and effort in this regard and and I just want to reiterate what Steve said. You know, my involvement in this is trying to help everyone get it right and everyone's got a different opinion. Um, but I, um, I'm just going to take it things a little bit out of order than what I thought and I apologize because I, I probably don't have the most recent version from the planning board either. First of all, I'm glad that we are continuing the public comment period February 27th, which will give everyone a little breathing room to digest some of this, uh, because it is a lot to digest certainly. Um, I happen to agree with Steve that we should uh, define the gross floor area the way that's measured. Uh, because just with my own past experience with the board, we didn't, the ADU I did on Noah Lab was not measured from the inside walls and the building, state building code was not applied. It was measured from the outside walls and included everything. Because I believe, and maybe Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if you're still in the room, that the state building code excludes closets and hallways. So, um, you know, I think we should just have that more clearly stated about what constitutes the gross floor area, um, either on the application for ADUs or, um, and/or, um, in our own bylaws. And I would suggest also that it's probably uh, the best and most uh, solid uh, way of doing that would be to mirror what the state definition is because they do specify in their regulations. They do uh, include that as a specific definition.
Well, we've got gross floor area in our, you know.
All right, so I will go back and talk to Town Council on this specific issue and how it differs from the state government.
Because we have gross floor area in our.
We have gross floor area defined in.
Our zoning bylaw.
In the zoning bylaw.
Thank you.
I will, I will go back and track that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, that's, that's a, so, uh, and then the other thing I would suggest is regarding, and I brought this up actually before we had the benefit of seeing the final regulations from the state under um, the design standards, um, and you know, I know that there seems, some areas may seem confusing to folks, but um, under the states, um, under 71, you know, 760 CMR, um, under 71.03, section 3, uh, A, um, I'm sorry, section 3, um, section 71.03, section 3 subsection B, uh, under number one, it says design standards and then um, dimensional standards obviously underneath it, but the design standards say that anything, it's pretty clear that it says anything that wouldn't be applied to a single-family residential dwelling in a single-family residential zone cannot be uh, arbitrarily applied to ADUs. And I think and again, I'm maybe probably going from an earlier version, so I apologize and appreciate the indulgence if you've already taken this out, but um, one of the accessory dwelling unit sections that you folks have under the 560, the 5, uh, 530, the site plan review and special permitting talks about in the last sentence the shading, um, and, um, other things, again, which I brought up before, that I think our additional design standards that this new, the new regulations that have been promulgated say you can't, if you can't apply it to a regular single-family being built, you can't apply it to an ADU. So I think I agree with Steve on that. Um, that would be my legal interpretation and I would kindly ask that you also include that on your review for council as well, um, with that, that citing of that section.
Um, I've already discussed that with Town Council and Town Council advises us to keep it in at the moment.
Okay, so that might change between um, February 27th, then I would just express my disagreement and um, I think that would be problematic on two fronts. One, the design standard I just mentioned. And secondly, that it may be considered unreasonable costs, you know, which is sort of the the umbrella standard that they're applying to this uh, new exercise, if you will. Um, and then again, I don't know if any changes have been made to the um, cooking um, kitchen facilities definition, if it has been, if you'd indulged me to say what those are. If not, I'd, I'd like to share a comment.
Nothing's changed. That, I mean, Town Council thinks our definition is perfectly fine.
Okay, again, I uh, would like to express my objection and um, urge the board to consider changing that and limiting it to just items that actually would be considered of cooking, which would be um, something that generates heat. And again, I would reiterate that the language, current language that is proposed by um, in the, in the town's definition uh, suggests that you can cook out of a refrigerator and I would suggest strongly that you cannot because it says, it's, it just says any, the way it's written currently, it says including but not limited to is the wording, the legal wording, if you will, that would trigger um, any one of those things constituting um, cooking. And I think we could all agree that we can't cook in a refrigerator. So, um, I understand what the board's concern is and what they're trying to get at. And um, you know, I, I appreciate, you know, what it is, but I don't think that's the wording of this particular section gets you there. In fact, I think it's very easily knocked out on, on a, um, on a review or a legal challenge, if you will. Um.
I think we use Town Council's word.
Town Council has reviewed the wording and has no problem with the way it is worded. We're going to keep the wording as is for now unless the board really wants to change it.
Okay, well, I would encourage the board to review that and um, and reconsider it. Um, let's see. The other thing that I thought was interesting, which may not be necessarily the board's purview, but again, you know, it just, it, it certainly entails the subject matter is, um, when they talk about connection, utility connections. Um, and Steve, I don't know if you can offer any guidance based on whoever else was at that meeting. Um, it appears, again, by my reading of what they say, that additional fees cannot be required in order to connect. But this may play into the whole, you know, ownership thing, can it be separately deeded out, etcetera? Because if, if you wire off on your property, in theory, it's still one connection. So I don't know how you would actually divide, you know, that out. But um, anyway, the, the regs suggest that that there can't be additional requirements to mandate an additional connection.
The law discussed that with Town Council as well. Town Council is aware of my concerns regarding this. The town administrator is aware of this. Right now, the zoning, which the planning board is in charge of, has nothing to do with sewer fees or water connection fees. Those are the domain of the sewer commissioners and water commissioners. They're not your domain. And so our zoning bylaw has nothing to do with, with that. We're aware of the issue and we are, believe me, we're discussing it with Town Council.
All right, yeah, no, and, and I agree with you, Karen. And I, I prefaced my remarks by saying, I know this is sort of, you know, it's related, but not necessarily, you know, what you, what your purview is. But thought it certainly was relevant to the discussion tonight. So, um, those would be my comments for now. I, I will, um, like I said, I appreciate the opportunity to extend the public comment period and, um, hope to, you know, commit some of this to writing as we bump along. And again, offer to the extent that anyone cares to use me as a resource, would offer uh, an opinion anytime anyone wanted to solicit one. So thank you all as we bump along and try to craft something that makes sense.
Thank you.
I just want to say to the board, the February 27th public hearing, we're going to be closing the public hearing then because we are riding up against when the warrant has to, when the wording has to go for the warrant. So the February 27th will probably be the last unless, um, for unfor-saken reason, I don't know. But I mean, that's what I have told Town Council. We have to get the wording in for the warrant.
And we have had many conversations with everybody, well, with the board. Uh, you know, we're, we're always the last to get our wording. Even the zoning is always a little more prickly than anything else to me before the town. Not the sexiest, but the most important, right? That's what we always say when I walk in our private little field. Sexy part of town. Does anybody on the board have anything else to say about what we now see as our current bylaw? No? So we're all agreed with what he has to say, it's fully voted. Any other comment for the public? Or is it nothing, Steve?
I'll have to.
Anybody else here is suing or wants to talk, Paulson?
No.
So Karen, what do you want to do here?
Uh, we want to continue the public hearing, um, until February 27th at 7:30. And as a motion, I move to continue the public hearing for the zoning amendments for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting until February 27th, 2025 at 7:30 a.m.
Is there a second? That is my Mr. Lawrence Allen Baker.
Aye.
Hey.
We think this is not a public.
So site plan review, we do, right, what do we want from it?
Actually, don't take it early. One, two, and.
We're just talking here.
Right on time.
We're actually going to talk.
By the time you make a legal act, I keep looking at the law. I'm looking at the, the, the.
It's how we end up in fix-to-law, like, uh, top person, I shouldn't say.
At the time you make a legal act.
No, let me know. No, let me know. The legal ad, the town will, the legal ad, we have, it's, it's now, you know. Why don't we go ahead and talk about that? Yeah, but it's.
I'll think.
I'm. I have a good one. You want the numbers?
I guess they're kind of a beauty.
Karen, please.
Hi.
Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm wanting to see.
In accordance with Citrus zoning bylaw, section seven seven, site plan administrative review, and section seven sixty parking requirements, section nine forty referrals, and general bylaws, section thirty-two oh fifty stormwater entrance regulations, planning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven o'clock PM in the select board's hearing room. Town hall, six hundred Chief Justice Michigan Highway, the subject of the hearing is a major site plan administrative review and stormwater permit of an application submitted by the Central Public Schools, chapters map lot, lot twenty-seven dash six dash A, for a new one hundred six thousand eighty-four square foot new family elementary school, demolishing the existing school when the new one is complete, parking for hundred and forty-seven cars, an access drive, a bus drive, new playground, site utilities, including drainage and landscaping, and seventy-two Anvil Road. Waivers are being requested to the number of parking spaces and with the private driver, drive, plan is available for review and planning boards, et cetera, et cetera.
So before we begin this meeting, uh, this is a, this is a public building, uh, we are applying, it comes in under the GOB amendment, state of Massachusetts, I'm gonna tell you how we gotta listen to this, I'm gonna listen to the applicant first, then we're gonna listen to our traffic engineer, then we're gonna listen to our theory P Y G, who's here in the room, then we'll go to the board, and then we will speak to the town later. So, good evening, welcome, I like to tell us what's happening over on Anvil Road.
So, good evening, I'm Julie Ward, I'm the director of supplemental services for these Citra Public Schools. Formerly, though, I was the academy principal, so, tonight, um, tonight I'm representing the school building committee. Um, the superintendent and also our business director wanted to be here tonight, but they are with the finance committee doing our budget, so, um, we just wanted to, we have been working on this for, oh, it's like forever. Um, and this, we're excited tonight to have Tom in with us so that we can just give you an overview of the site and all of the decisions that are being made.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Tom Hengelsberg, I'm the project manager with Dorit Whittier.
This is, we got very long, I have to go to that little apple.
Okay. I just wanna shout.
Oh, shout.
Okay. I'm Tom Hengelsberg, I'm the project manager with Dorit Whittier, uh, with me is.
Hi, everyone, I'm Don Walter, um, also, I'm the dorm room principal there, also ninety-eight corner, says, vote in Citrus. We used to sit up there with everybody, number years ago, in the planning boards. Uh, we have the pleasure of doing the Gates Middle School hearing, and the Central Public Safety Board, so, thank you for allowing us to present.
Hi, and I'm Stephen Venfresco with Niche Engineering, civil engineer, I'll discuss the stormwater shortly with you and answer your questions. Also here from your peer review of this one.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, uh, we also have Brian Vigini here from Niche Engineering, other civil engineer, online, we have our landscape architect, uh, Kelly Connolly, uh, from, uh, Territ Inc., and then we have a couple of other folks, we also have someone from Niche Traffic, um, engineer, uh, Brian Zamolga. Um, so they're available for questions if needed, um, and with that, I'm just gonna, hopefully, quickly go through, uh, our slides here.
Okay, so before, before we start, I, I've listened to this, uh, because I'm the liaison to conservation, so sometimes we move to the agendas because, uh, I know a lot of what you're gonna say, we've already said in conservation, I think it was just a mistake, you might throw this all up, it's redundant, though he, they don't need us. Um, but a, a lot of, I know that what you wanna say is reputation, but that's part of government, so I think it, it behooves all of us, I have reached out, I've been speaking, maybe with some part of the stormwater that I've heard, uh, from conservation, so I know that what you wanna say is, is very repetitive to you, but not to us, thank you.
No, not, not at all, not at all. So, what we were hoping to do was, uh, walk through the standards of review, uh, in section seventy point six, um, and, uh, just try to hit on these, sort of in the order that they come in the, in the zoning bylaws. Um, just quickly, overall project schedule, um, we are right in the middle of construction documents phase. Um, we just got our sixty percent CD estimate, which actually came out very favorably, we're under budget, which is very nice, nice news. Um, and then we've got a few more months in construction documents before the project goes out to bid, so, we're sort of getting to that point now where things are starting to get real, um, well, very real, and, uh, we're very excited about that. Um, once the project is bid, um, everything being equal, we would put shovels in the ground in September of this year. Uh, construction of the building is roughly eighteen months, building completion in March of twenty twenty-seven, so about two years from now. Um, and then, there's a lot of scrambling that happens on the site, uh, the old building has to come down. Um, you know, we do have some phasing plans that we wanna walk through with you, um, that explain the complexities of that end game of schedules. Um, all of these, uh, images were in your packet, um, just kind of an overview of the, of the building, uh, seen from the air, this is from the east. So if you can imagine, the existing building is right about where the parking lot and the playground in the foreground are here, so, we're building the new building on what is now Flannery Field, it's actually up in the air a little bit from what the elevation of Flannery, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. Um, and then we're re, you know, basically rechristening Flannery Field at the back of the site. Um, here's a view, uh, from the ground, basically kind of at the drop-off peninsula, if you will, between the, uh, the large, uh, loop drop-off and, um, and then the guest parking here, the, the visitor parking, which also is going to function as a, uh, drop-off and pickup for the pre-K students, where, um, parents can actually pull in, park, and walk their kids into the school, so it won't be sort of a lineup, I think it will be a park and drop, uh, situation there.
So it's pre-K through six?
It's, uh, did I say that? No, pre-K through five. Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, so pre-K is being relocated from Wamputuck, and then it's the combination of Saviley and Krishin schools consolidation, if you will. And then this is a view of the front of the building, which is really kind of the side of the building, but it is the view that you see from Anvil Road, so, the, the main entrance, uh, in the foreground here, the road network that's shown in this view is actually an older version, um, the, uh, that crossroad there is no longer there, um, it's been split into the two entrances that we'll see in the site plan. Um, you know, I, I heard from Karen that this image was actually, uh, uh, very useful in terms of, uh, explaining a lot about what's happening with the site. So, so, so we've got, um, hopefully people can see the arrow here, we've got, uh, the main entrance, which is actually scooted down a little bit to the east from where the entrance is now, it's three lanes, one lane in and two lanes out. So that is one of the, uh, uh, variances that we're seeking to, uh, to have on this project. And then we also have a separated, uh, bus entrance only, so it's a one-way in, uh, count, uh, clockwise circulation around the site for buses. Buses will let off the students primarily on this longer, uh, straightaway here, but if operations uh, work out that they need more curb length for buses, there is actually more curb length, uh, on the north end of this drive where, uh, where students could be let out as well. So we've got some flexibility built into the site plan for that. Um, this area back here, keep moving my, my arrow, this area back here is the, uh, the service yard, uh, that's all concrete, so that's gonna be, uh, you know, very tough, very cleanable surface, uh, able to take the turning of vehicles. Um, what's shown here is a, uh, is our.
Size, a truck size?
Yeah, so it's, it's not the largest truck that goes on the road, but kind of the next largest, and that's what all of the turning radii, um, and the turning movements were tested, uh, on this site for, uh, we also obviously tested the largest, you know, the ladder truck that Citrus has, um, as well as some other turning vehicles, uh, you know, as, as we went through the site plan process. So the idea is trucks go forward and then back into kind of a peninsula loading dock that we have back there. That's also garbage, uh, recycling, et cetera, et cetera, um, there's an emergency generator there as well as a, uh, transformer, so that's kind of all that, what all that stuff is there. Um, getting back to site circulation, uh, the, this was something that we, we really studied very, uh, very exhaustively in, in partnership with the school, um, the idea is that all the cars come in, uh, using the main drive here, there's actually stacking space for about seventy cars along this line here, this blue line, basically up to this point, so think of that as the inbound cars, we've got seventy stacking spaces there. Um, this entire loop could be active drop-off and pickup, so you can be very efficient in terms of the number of vehicles that are, you know, letting kids on or off at any given time, it's really a world apart from what exists there right now.
Do you know how many children, how many children are participating here at the school?
It's, it's a design, uh, enrollment of five hundred sixty, so four hundred sixty K through five, and then a hundred pre-K. Yep. So then outbound from that point, there's another thirty-five stacking spaces, the equivalent of thirty-five stacking spaces. Um, as I was saying before, uh, there's a separate circulation for pre-K where parents can actually pull into these spaces, uh, open the door, escort their children into the school, and they come back out and then take off.
Do they start school the same time that everybody else does?
No, it's staggered.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, which is, that's, I'm glad you picked that up, because that's really important in terms of, uh, working out the, the, all of the traffic coming at one time versus being spread out, you know?
Thank you.
Yep. Yes. Um, let's see, we'll get into numbers of parking spaces, but generally, generally, we've got a hundred forty-seven paved spaces, we've got twenty-nine overflow spaces, this was actually a later addition. The overflow spaces are indicated as these green strips here, um, which are, we're talking about doing them in grass pave. Um, we did get the, uh, comments from the DPW saying they don't plow grass pave, so we're, we're looking at that right now, you know, what, what might we do there as well. So a hundred and seventy-six total spaces on the site. Um, parking waiver request, uh, you know, we, we talked about this in one of the memos that we submitted, um, the zoning for, uh, this use is one space per two hundred square feet, so multiplying that out, you'd get five hundred thirty spaces, uh, which is just really a lot for an elementary school. Um, might be appropriate for a high school, uh, there are a hundred ten spaces existing on the site. Um, and then again, this is our proposal for a hundred forty-seven paved spaces, twenty-nine grass paved for a total of one seventy-six. Um, we pu- pulled this clip out of the peer review, which we did just get today, uh, no, yesterday afternoon, um, and saying they, they do agree with the number of spaces that we have proposed, and they think that that's appropriate. Um, just an image of the grass pave, this, this is what that system looks like, um, this is actually used at the Gates School, there is a, uh, a fire lane in front of that school, same idea. Um, planting plan, um, you know, again, I've got Kelly Connolly on the line for questioning, but, um, I'll just sort of walk through this fairly quickly here. Um, the main things in terms of you all are, you know, protect, protecting of adjoining, uh, property owners against detrimental use on this site, um, and we really took that seriously, you'll see in the, the planting plan that we really tried very hard, uh, both through a combination of preserving existing mature trees, which are along this line right here, we actually stepped out, uh, the, the drive and put a retaining wall in here to make sure that those root balls are not being cut, um, so those trees will be able to survive, you know? Fingers crossed, um, combination of that and, uh, very dense planting of new buffers along the eastern edge and the northern edge, uh, here as well. Um, as, as, uh, as you, uh, mentioned at the beginning, we did talk to, uh, Concom about the areas around the, uh, the wetland resource, we have a wetland resource here in the back, this is adjoining, uh, and adjacent to the wetlands that are on the, uh, town conservation land next door, um, and then we have another small, see, we have another small one. Uh, another small one, uh, down in the southwest corner, uh, of the site as well, down here, there is another, uh, wetland across the road, which does have a setback that goes onto our site, um, so one of the things that we talked about was through a combination of, uh, plantings inside these, uh, stormwater basins and replanting, revegetating, uh, the buffer zone after we're done doing the work that we need to do, uh, both here and then a very narrow strip up here, because we are right up against the buffer zone, uh, in the, in this northern location here as well, so through a combination of all those things, plus the fact that part of our stormwater solution is a constructed wetland back here, uh, the, the Concom seemed very satisfied with that, uh, approach of that strategy.
So a question here, is you're waiting till completion of the project?
Hold on, hold, hold on, we'll, we'll take questions to the center, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, the only other thing I wanna say about landscape is, um, the, the new trees that are proposed for the site are native, uh, generally, um, uh, that's what I'm looking for, Tom, yes, thank you, drought tolerant, uh, species. So, yeah, it's right there in this.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that is definitely something that we talked about, uh, was making sure that, uh, especially the, the shrubs were not, you know, deer's necks. So, um, these next drawings, these next two drawings are site sections that are cut through the site, so imagine, you know, like you cut open an apple and you're sort of just looking at the side. So, um, this section is taken, kind of cutting east-west, so you're looking at the building on the left side, and then we're looking at that east property line here on the right side, and then up above is kind of a magnification of that edge of the site, and you see existing trees that we're trying to preserve on both sides of the stone wall that makes that east property line. Um, we're, uh, actually planting in understory plantings to, uh, really solidify that buffer, and then further, we have this, uh, retaining wall here, which works really nicely because as cars are going around, uh, the drive, their headlights are not flashing onto the neighbor's backyard, so, it kind of, in addition to all the other things it's doing, it's, uh, preventing that, uh, that headlight wash from happening as well. And then this last, uh, this, this other image here, this is the same kind of idea, a section cut north-south, so we're looking west in that bottom view, so we're looking at the school, kind of cutting right through all of the, uh, the parking areas, you know, again, we've got a stone wall on the backside here on the north side, uh, planting very heavily to screen the, uh, horse farm. Unfortunately, that doesn't work for odors, but, or, or flies, but that's, you know, those are things that, uh, they've been dealing with and, uh, you know, that's just part of the life there, um, and then, again, the blow-up, uh, detail on this side here, and this was created to talk to our neighbors, uh, that are on the south edge of the site, again, to show that, um, we're preserving that great stand of existing trees there, you know, many of those are, uh, evergreens. Again, to show that um we're preserving that great stand of existing trees there, you know, many of those are uh evergreens. And then also showing that the grading is all going away from their property right now. A lot of stormwater actually dumps into some of those backyards, so that whole condition is going to be reversed. So that was, that's kind of a nice thing. So at this point, um we have the 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 civil drawings, uh layout drawings. I think unless you have specific questions, it's probably a good time to just start uh talking about stormwater, if that's all right?
Well, actually, I'd like to traffic interview.
I'd like to try to discuss traffic.
Sure, sure.
Because they only, we get, we just had the traffic peer review yesterday, so because it came late. We agreed that the only aspects of traffic we would talk about tonight would be basically the two waivers, because it relates to traffic. They would like a waiver for the amount of parking on the site and a waiver. Zoning by law says driveway maximum width is twenty-four feet, and so um they want to do thirty-six feet. So we have our traffic engineer online who can um who can speak to traffic and then they can add anything that they want to add about the waivers. But I think the waivers are kind of important just to get an idea of how the board feels tonight on those waivers. That sounds like everybody? Mr. Durk, are you all aligned here with us?
I am, yes. Um I can't seem to turn my video on, but I, it might be blocked, but I can, as long as you can hear me, I guess that would be okay. Okay, thank you. Well, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessa Associates were the board's uh peer review consultant uh as it relates to traffic and transportation. And I just, following up on what Karen had said, we did provide a peer review of both the traffic study and the site plans, which I know the board just received. And so um I will focus my comments tonight really just on those two waiver related items and our comments as they pertain to those to those two items. So really focusing on the on the site plan aspects of the project. So as the applicant had undertaken the transportation analysis in their study, they did review uh six alternative access configurations for the project. One of those is what is represented on the site plan here um that you see tonight. As it relates to the driveway cross-section approaching Invinyl Road and the alternatives they looked at. They did look at alternatives with the two driveways as shown, with the options being that the primary driveway uh would retain the twenty-four feet in width. That would not require waiver, or this design that you see, which is thirty-six feet in width as it approaches Invinyl Road as well. The conclusion in the transportation analysis was that one lane or two lanes exiting uh would function appropriately. Uh however, if you have two lanes exiting as shown on this drawing, which results in the thirty-six foot wide cross-section. The difference being that the vehicle queue on the driveway would be reduced. However, if it was maintained at twenty-four feet in width from a delay perspective. Um the delays would be, continue to be acceptable, even looking in the future with five hundred and sixty students on the campus. I, but it would result in some additional vehicle queuing, potentially extending back past where the crosswalk is shown. Where the emergency drive connection is between the bus access and the uh the primary access. So I think as you're looking at the twenty-four feet in width for that first sec- segment of the driveway versus the thirty-six foot in width that's proposed. Really, the difference, it can function operationally fine, there's no need to have the two lanes. However, as you look at pedestrians using that crosswalk during the school pickup or drop off, drop off time periods. The the trade-off is that you can get to a situation where the queue would extend back to the crosswalk or beyond the crosswalk. Um so so I think that's, that's the difference really between the thirty-six foot wide cross-section for the short segment and a twenty-four foot wide cross-section. From our perspective, either one functions appropriately, uh vehicles are not supposed to tar- stop on the crosswalk. However, there is that safety issue of if you have a car on either side of that crosswalk and someone is crossing. Um if they're crossing from the school, let's say, from west to east to get to the cross, the sidewalk on the other side. A vehicle that's entering the campus may not be able to see that pedestrian as they're using the crosswalk. Uh so from a safety perspective, reducing the queuing, I think, is is beneficial, and that would result in the thirty-six foot wide cross-section. To the extent that you're inclined to grant the waiver, I would, I know Karen will be careful in terms of how this may be crafted. We do provide comments as it relates to the geometry of the driveway. Um so if you were to specify, you know, thirty-six feet in width for a certain length of the driveway before it transitions back to twenty-four feet. Uh one of the comments we have is that the the, if you look at the driveway, the little jog to get into the right turn lane. So that's what we call it a taper that's on the west side of the driveway, uh that taper is too short. So it needs to be longer. The the effect of lengthening that taper means that the thirty-six, or the the width of the driveway that would be more than thirty-six feet in width. Will extend a little bit further than what than what you see on this on this drawing. So um it's not going to be thirty-six feet, the full width of that or the full length, but I just want to make it, make you aware that to the extent that you were to grant the waiver. And you wanted to specify a certain distance within which that thirty-six feet uh would be allowed. We just want to make sure that the drawings are updated to reflect uh that taper being longer. The crosswalk would then need to move uh in the northerly direction as well, but those are, those are details. But, you know, again, to the extent that you're inclined to grant that waiver, we would just want to make sure um that the drawings are updated appropriately. The the other items that would affect the width of the driveway, um and I don't think it's so much within the campus itself. But I I did hear that a vehicle turning analysis has been performed. We have not seen that analysis, so if that could be provided. I know they had indicated that they did use a tractor semi trailer to run through the site, which is what we recommended that they do use. However, it's a a school bus uh turns much different than a tractor trailer. And in fact, the tractor trailer in some instances can turn sharper than a school bus, uh just given the articulation of the vehicle. So we do want to make sure, um again, that if a waiver is granted, we want to make sure that the plans reflect the width of the driveway. That's necessary for the appropriate vehicles to maneuver through the site. Uh so that's going to be the tractor trailer, a school bus, um and the fire truck, those should be the design vehicles. So we'd want to see all three of those vehicles circulating throughout the project site. Um lastly, as it relates to internal circulation in the drive width, and I don't think this this affects the the waiver for the twenty-four feet. But the area where the loading docks are shown, um we just want to make sure that there's a jog in the alignment that occurs there. That's really not conducive for a school bus. So as you look at a school bus, you're traversing that area, it's about a nine-foot offset uh in that area. So that school bus would have difficulty just maintaining the alignment that's there. So if you picture the bus traveling from south to north and it continues straight through where the concrete pad area is. You can see um it basically goes right into where, um it doesn't, it doesn't go straight. Um it has to make a slight jog to the right, and that jog's about nine, nine feet. So um again, that won't affect the width of the drive aisle, but it's just something that needs to be considered, but it also needs to be considered in the vehicle turning analysis. I'll, I can stop there if there are any questions as it relates to the driveway width waiver request.
Yeah, one, one quick question, you said the taper's too short, so how long is the taper going to be? But what what's the practical impact of that?
So what we've recommended is that the taper be at least a hundred feet in length, the, so the total distance to to get into that lane. The the practical effect of it is I, and I I um, if you look at the drawing that's there now. And that little taper that's there, and you picture a school bus that's about forty feet, forty feet in length. If they wanted to make a right-hand turn, that bus is not going to be able to use that taper to get, it's gonna, basically, it'll be partially in the left turn lane. And partially in the right turn lane as it tries to get into the right turn lane, because it's very sharp. So if you provide a one-hundred-foot-long taper, the bus is able to make an ease, easily, ease, uh an easier maneuver to get into that right turn lane. So really, just from a dimensional perspective, you just picture, put a bus where that taper is, and you can see that the bus can't maneuver to get into that right turn lane. It's very difficult. So the hundred-foot in length is something that eases that maneuver to get into the lane.
Yeah, I just can't see how long the current one is, so we going from what to a hundred feet?
It looked to me there was probably clo- closer to about sixty or so, if if I'm reading the plane right. But but it's also, it's, it's, yeah, it's a little abrupt. And so we want to, we want to put some curves at the beginning and at the end of that, and I think that will smooth it all out.
So it has to go back to like the crosswalk?
Yes, if you, if you basically take what's there and it's going to push it back toward the crosswalk, it would actually go through where the emergency access is. And so then the, what we would want to do is, we've suggested that crosswalk really wants to be moved north to the point where the sidewalk that go, exactly, right at that point there. So if you picture the crosswalk at that point there, that is ideal from a sightline perspective as well. You're right at the apex of the curve, so everybody, as you're approaching that curve, has, you've got the pedestrian and the vehicles. All have good sightlines to that, rather than coming around the curve and all of a sudden being right on top of the crosswalk.
That is.
Yeah, so I think there's some advantages to moving the crosswalk irrespective of of the taper, but but the taper should just be increased in length.
And that crosswalk where it is would then looking you down to the street, so it's for walkers basically to access.
Yes, the crosswalk, the crosswalk would shift to the north to align with the sidewalk that's to the south of this, of the new school building. That would also require an extension of the sidewalk that's on the east side of the driveway to meet up with that crossing.
Yes, okay.
I have a question. We're talking about the buses in the back, um where are the buses coming through when the pickup gets off?
The, the buses, the buses enter here and then they drop off along this curb and this curb. And if in the future more buses are required than what we were given for our program, there's also more straight curb space on the north side.
So that, and that, and that, the dog just gets off on that side.
But it's a loop to go all.
Yeah, and then they just keep going all the way.
It's that other, other driveway to the left.
Then it goes back around more on the other cars.
So could I ask you that that driveway to the left is an exit over driveway?
It's, sorry.
Bus for entrance, huh?
The, ah. Sorry, these fade in and out.
Yeah, there's an entrance only, one way.
On the entrance, yes, okay, okay, run glasses, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's an entrance only, this is entrance and exit.
So where is the parking on that plan, is it in the front?
The parking for?
Like parents?
Parents.
Who are going into the building or staff?
Okay, so.
That aren't dropping off.
That, that's a very good question. So in the morning and, you know, during uh pickup, these spaces are designated for pre-K. And all other times, those are visitor spaces.
Okay.
Yeah. So you're getting kind of a dual use out of that.
And where's staff, like staff parking?
Staff would be parking in the big lot here.
And that is, how many spaces did you set?
No, I don't remember, I think it was in the the nineties, I have a different drawing that has that actually wrote it.
So does um, does your traffic person want to say anything about the width of the driveway before we call the planning board about, uh, would they consider the waiver?
Maybe. I don't think so, I think it, no.
Okay, so, I mean, if they correct the drawings, et cetera, what, i- is the planning board willing to grant a waiver to go from twenty-four to thirty-six? If they correct the the plans and do um what our traffic engineer advises?
I am, I have my own answer.
I think, I think I want to make sure that markings and the directional signs and all of that are very clear on how the solid works. Other than that, I think it's fine.
And move that crosswalk.
Yeah, no, I think that is a really good comment.
Alright, so then the other thing that we wanted our traffic um consultant here is to um, the the part, the number of parking spaces. Okay, so we, I'm in this loading pile or two, five, five hundred stop and, yes, and you want?
Hundred and seventy-six.
Well, I hope that all the pre-K for, for driving, you can only hope, right, that they're not driving.
No, but it's, I feel like it's it's more for um the benefits of parking use, more for like school events, right?
So what's, what's that like?
So once that happens, when you have a Christmas package, you don't, oh, why don't you?
Or or you have open house.
An open house, how do, how do you?
You have almost every parent, you know, say seventy percent of parents maybe in one car would be into it. And you know, you don't want people starting to park like in the neighborhoods around there, so it's not part of it.
So how is that going to overflow, how do you do that?
Well, that was part of the reason why we tried to create more spaces along the um the back driveway.
Right.
To just, to help handle that. One of the things that we've been discussing with the school and, you know, not there to a solution yet. But for example, probably the, one of the largest turnout things is going to be like an open house, you know, expectations like the thing. We're asking them if they would be uh willing to split that event into two parts. Even.
That now, we currently do that at all, at all the elementary schools for that reason.
Yeah.
Um because the parking right now is obviously quite old.
I have a question. The um bus driveway, how wide is that?
It starts out at twenty-two and then goes down to twenty feet.
So it's twenty feet wide?
Yep.
Now, if there was a horrific overflow, why could people not park along that bus area? Because it's.
You mean at night?
At night, not, not during the day, not when buses are running around, but rather.
It's a fire, it's a fire lane, that's your fire lane.
Yeah, no, so that's why this little sketch is on here, this is the thing that we presented to the fire department and the police department. And we did have another option, which had parallel parking on the straight runs of the drive.
They said no.
Which obviously is more spaces, they said no, they said it's not enough room to get a truck through. People don't park, you know, as nicely as we draw the spaces on the.
They don't park, they abandon.
Fire lane has to be twenty feet wide.
Okay, gotcha, I'm sorry, throw that out now, thank you.
So you all, you already divide your open houses.
We already do divide big events. To the best of our ability, um certainly, there, we have families that have kids that have older kids, younger kids, and they're not going to come twice. Um but we do the best of our ability, that's for sure. So this will be significantly more than what we already have.
Oh, okay.
Yes, this is much more than what we have right now.
But also too.
Yeah, you got two schools.
These elementary things, open house, whatever, or meet the teacher, et cetera, et cetera, it's staggered. In other words, everybody gets um ten minutes here or ten, so they're, no, everybody's going for once.
Open house is the only one that, like you said, is, everybody comes, right?
Right, but that's the only one, everything else is timed scheduled.
I'm completely agree with you when it comes to elevations, I'm sorry, I, I, I like to look at it.
Well, I'm not, yeah, I have to work right there.
Yes, and you have some teaching yourself, yeah.
Teaching, I would say, I mean, every district is similar, I don't want to, but I, I would, I feel like there are some events, like um.
Challenge only.
Yeah, but I mean, usually those are more grade specific, right?
Yeah.
Right, like if you had a play, it would probably be a certain grade or like a cor- a chorus concert or, then it's typically like a fifth grade event.
Yeah.
But I, I would agree that the only sort of whole school event would be, I know, like, what we call an open house.
Yeah, so my questions are, so on that, I'm thinking, will the school be having more events? Because it's going to be bigger, newer school, we're going to have maybe Montorum or whatever, and then there's the field, we'll probably have more sporting events. So I'm just curious why we're reducing what the standard is by sixty percent, if my math is correct. I, I assume we just can't fit more parties, right? Yeah, I mean, these are, what is the, what would we be cutting if we said, you know, we need at least a hundred parties? Uh the planetary field and probably at least one of the playgrounds. And that's just not tenable, given the fact that we've got, you know, two schools coming together. You know, up to five hundred students, five hundred and sixty students, um be tough.
May I ask for what the planetary field is useful, what what grades or whatever do you?
Currently, it's mainly for town, um we use our, we have our CZ out there. But otherwise, it's often used for town events like the weekends.
But is it little league, is it big kids?
So so
Oh, it's it's
No, is it is it high school considered like the sound?
It's no, it's it's little, it's youth, it's youth.
Juice all, yes.
Yeah, it's
I would say How many parking spaces do you have exactly in your school, right? What's the other thing?
Jenkins, Jenkins.
I do not.
Oh, how many spaces are at Jenkins? No, I don't know off the top of my head.
How many are there?
Yeah.
It says there's under ten.
Yeah, yeah, right now. And that's that's paved spaces and the gravel parking that's in front of uh the existing, you know.
So how many at the other school?
At at Cushing?
Yeah, one at the top.
Again, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's
Of course, you do not have a lot of parking.
It's it's similar. I think it's a little bit more than Hatherley, but similar in the same ballpark.
Oh, but it's the draft that same old like Cushing, pushing, because they're right down schools, one of its services.
But the site plans are not identical, yeah.
No. But it's the same makeup.
Yep.
I think it's one hundred and something students or were at Jenkins. It's it's a pretty big, it was.
As as a parent who has put four kids for Hatherley, as this word knows, um, it was very rare and attended many events there and many events that nowadays high school. Um, there it's it's rare when it's full capacity, but people are parked down the side and all that stuff, so it works. Um, it seems like, again, I'd love to know the numbers, but it seems like between Cushing plus Hatherley spaces is probably currently it's probably more than one seventy six. So combining two schools, we might have less parking, so that's my ruling.
That's, so to that point, this is not, Chris Carson, one eighteen. This is not Hatherley plus Cushing. This is a combination of every district, so you're not combining those two schools.
Oh, is some of them go to?
Oh, some of them will go to other schools.
Will go to Jenkins, some of them will go to one top, it's spread.
So it's not, it's not, it's not those two schools combined.
Oh, right.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Seven, three.
Say what?
How much less is it than the combination of those two schools?
Well, then, when
Well, I think you said five hundred and forty kids.
There's five hundred and sixty children that will be coming in, but that's a hundred these floors.
Sixty kids.
So currently, I would say it's probably about four. I I know that Hatherley has like two something and Cushing is relatively close, but high twos. So it'll be the number will be very close.
It's pretty similar, yeah.
It is similar.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'll just make a comment that as it is
We have we have an address for sure.
Chris Asenberg with Butter in Curtis Estates. I'm probably the closest to Butter to this new property.
Mm hmm.
Uh, I'll reserve some of my other questions for later, but my comment that I'll make here is I currently already see based on the current Hatherley school overflow in our neighborhood. Not all the time, but when there is that one occasional event, there is currently overflow parking, but actually parking on our street.
Oh, sure.
So.
Okay, thank you. So I have a question regarding overflow parking, et cetera. Is the school department going to regulate and enforce parking during these big events so that you don't get parking where they shouldn't be parking on this site? Because it, you know, if, you know, God forbid there was ever an emergency during an event, you know, fire trucks still needs to get there.
Yes.
You know, if people park, you know, at the entrances, who's gonna regulate that? Do you know, will we have a police presence at school functions?
We, it depends on the function. If it's going to be something really large, we would, um, but as a principal, I have definitely been the quality that has to get out there with all the comms and make sure that I'm making announcements. Um, I was principal in another district as well, and we did have a smaller driveway and we betcha I was out there because I worked really well with that fire department, but they were great to come home and be like, um, I'm sorry, did you see that? So.
But is that gonna happen during during events?
I think to the best of their ability, that's, I mean, everybody wants to keep everybody safe in that way, so. And to some, one of the other events um was is the turkey trap, that's the other one because other kids come, but um it's been at the high school in previous years. So if that was something that parking was going to be an issue using the high school field so that all the kids can come from up there is also always an option. So parking and working with the neighborhood is absolutely a priority for us, so it and it would be even with this many spots, which to me, having lived a hundred and ten, I'm like, wow. But and we've also done things so for staff, um, staff has been great that they when park something else and pick each other up, we're really low rate for having an open house or having other things. Um, staff is terrific about trying to also accommodate families.
That's a really important point because there are two other schools within five minute drive of this um of this site. There's, uh, I know it's private property, but there's the um, it's a pre Orthodox school and church that's within three minutes drive with a huge parking lot. Um, so there are other places where if you really needed a plan for a large event, um, you could have other measures for parking as well. I I appreciate that, but
You can't drop walk up that street, yeah, because I walk up at all times, it's dangerous.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I I think so. I appreciate all good stuff. Um, you know, I I I think there's only so much we can do about partnering with this. How many we can get in there, that's how many we can get in there. We, like I said, we, uh, you know, worked around it in the past. I'm sure we'll continue to do that. Enforcement is brutal, like everyone still goes the wrong way at the high school, the wrong way, first drives, be nuts. So I'm certainly centered to the others because I'm the neighbor right behind. So when we get to the stormwater, I'll have some comments on that. But there's only so much I think we can do for it, and I wouldn't want to lose the field and the playground to accommodate more parking, let's just.
And I'm having a parent and now a grandparent, so I fully understand these parking spaces, et cetera, et cetera. Um, frankly, I think a hundred and twenty seven plus the whatever in the back is more is adequate at this point, at this moment.
Do you want to hear from our traffic and be very sure he's still on the line?
All right.
I mean, he has a different justification spaces than they do, so I can be sure. Mr. Dirk, would you like to give us your justification for the for all the amount of spaces?
Yeah, sure, so. And thank you again. So the we we looked at the parking calculations, actually two different ways to try to, you know, right size the number of spaces or at least validate the number of spaces that are being proposed. Um, so the the first approach was to look at data from similar type of schools, so elementary schools, um, and that data was available through the Institute of Transportation Engineers and they they published information for us, statistics, um, for some for similar type of schools. So elementary schools, you know, K through five essentially, so similar or pre K uh through fifth grade, similar to what is being proposed here. When they provide the information to us, they provide like the average. So if you averaged out the peak parking demand for all of the sites uh that they surveyed, they provide for us that. So the average, if you, so if you apply the average parking demand, that would roughly be what fifty percent of the sites that were surveyed, their peak parking demand would be. They also publish another statistic, which is the eighty fifth percentile parking demand. So that that is typically what's used for design purposes. And the reason for that is that of the eighty five site or of the number of sites that they reviewed or have data for, um, eighty five percent of those sites, the peak parking demand was at that level or below. Uh, only fifteen percent were above. So we used those two statistics, the average and the eighty fifth percentile. If you apply the average observed parking demand to the school, um, the calculation resulted in a peak parking demand of a hundred and one parking spaces. We then used the eighty fifth percentile number, which is higher, and that number resulted in a peak parking demand of a hundred and forty one parking spaces, so pretty close to what they're proposing. So that review made us comfortable with the fact that the hundred and forty seven that were proposed should be sufficient to accommodate, and it's really day to day operations of the school. So it it's not reflective of events. So when we're looking at this information, because event conditions at schools vary widely, um, town by town, school by school, and so there's no data that you can hard and fast point to it and come up with a come up with a number. What we can say is that the hundred and forty seven spaces that are proposed is sufficient to accommodate day to day operations of the school. So we were comfortable with that and there that resulted in the the snapshot statement that you see on the slide that's here. The other thing that we looked at is the exist, the parking demands for the existing Hatherley school, uh, as it exists today with the student population, um, which was uh two hundred and sixty three students, I think at the time that parking observations were performed. And this excludes the gravel lot because that was not being used for just regular day operations. So what was observed was that about there's fifty nine paved parking spaces, fifty of those spaces were occupied during the school day at peak. Um, and so we looked at that parking ratio on a per student basis and then applied that to five hundred and sixty students. And if you use that approach, you result, it came out to a hundred and seven parking spaces uh during the peak demand period. So if you approach it using those two methodologies, the I T E data, both the average and the eighty fifth percentile parking demand statistics, and then you brought it back to the existing school operations at the Hatherley school. In either case, the hundred and forty seven parking spaces were shown to be sufficient to accommodate daily uh regular day school operations. Um, so that's why we were comfortable with the hundred and forty seven spaces. What I would say is that relates to the the grasscrete spaces that are proposed. I think, you know, aside from the comments, we we haven't reviewed them, but aside from the comments from D P W, you you know, consideration has to be given as to how you access those parking spaces and that the drive aisle and the circulation in that area is not made for on on street or or, you know, adjacent to the curb. It's not made for that parking because as the vehicles, you'd either have to open the bus lane, so vehicles could either get to those spaces or exit from those spaces because that's really designed as a one way traffic flow. Um, or you'd need to make modifications of the drive so it could function two way. I I think there's you should be comfortable with the number of paved parking spaces and not the grasscrete spaces. And if the if for some reason the grasscrete spaces can be designed in a way that is acceptable to D P W and for the circulation that's proposed, then I think it'd be, it can be considered. But I think to this point, that needs more more work. And I wouldn't be able to suggest to you that it's appropriate to to allow for those twenty nine spaces to be built, given the circulation and layout as it's currently proposed. Uh, but we are comfortable with a hundred and forty seven.
Thank you. So is the board willing to grant a waiver for the number of parking spaces?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, most of the conditions.
Okay, I mean, but we we can work on that, but just so that they
A bit, yeah.
Can you tell me, I'm sorry, where were the grass ones or are the grass ones?
In the back, in the back, in the back.
Past past the school, like for like
And several spots.
Yeah, so there's a grouping here. I think there's four here. There's, I think, nineteen or twenty here and then around nine there. I'm not sure if my math is adding up. Um, the to respond to Mr. Dirk's comment about the access to those spaces, these would only be used for special events. And in that case, there's no buses traveling on this road. So in that case, the one way traffic would be open and people could use these by accessing them as parallel parking spaces. The curb that's intended on the edges where those spaces are would be a sloped mountable granite curb that would be just, you know, basically starting from flush and going up of, you know, maybe three or four inches, probably not even that much.
Except the spaces in the back are where you have your snow storage. So how is how is that gonna work?
Um, well, there's a combination, the the plan is a combination of plows and smaller vehicles and in you know, I think the straight answer to your question, we have to keep working with E P W to figure out, number one, would they be willing to plow if we changed the surface? And number two, you know, just what's the mechanics of it all?
Right now, you currently show your snow storage where you have your grass paved overflow parking.
There is some snow storage, I think, shown here. I don't think we had any shown along the edges here and definitely not there. There was a little bit here and I think we have some down here and here.
Alright, so can we move on from Jeff?
Yeah, I I go down. Um, there's a lot of rain out there, not that we don't love rain.
Mm hmm.
Are there any more parking spots there or how is that?
Oh, believe me, we've looked at that. That that's actually a snow storage spot too. Thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, that's got a little white circle on it. Yeah, so that's no storage there as well. What's difficult about that is it's on the curve, so getting in and out of that gets dangerous. And it's also right, I'm gonna get my arrow back. It's right next to the exit where people are coming out after having dropped off, so.
You can't be that high.
Yeah, you're eating up a lot of space to only get three or four more spaces. And you've just increased impervious, which he's gonna talk about. And that's that's a battle, you know, it's like the battle of the bulge that we've been fighting here.
Well, if you don't put those silly huge curves up there, then people will just park everywhere.
There there are six inch curbs all around uh the front half.
So there are where the tires, then welcome to.
Sure.
Alright, so um Jeff, thank you very much. Um, you're free to leave now because they're not, we're not gonna discuss any more traffic.
No, we're on, thank you so much.
Give everybody time to digest the traffic comments.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Dirk.
I guess move on to stormwater.
He's hoping to give you a floor. Do you want to take a break? Okay.
So in terms of quantity or loss?
Yeah, I'm just
Hello again, Steve, I've been impressed with Mitch Engineering. Um, yes, we go. Apologies if some of you that have heard this before, but um we'll talk about stormwater again from uh the conservation hearing earlier this week. Um, so this site plan shows impervious area in the purple are the driveway sidewalks. Uh, the red is obviously the roof for the building and the green is landscaped areas, it's stormwater features that are on the edges. Um, if you go to the next one, um, we
Dark green.
Sorry, dark green are so this is this is highlighting the stormwater system that we're proposing on the site currently. Um, I think the next slide is probably better because of the vision because we are using different types of stormwater features. Um, I think it's a little bit easier to understand. So we'll start at the bottom of the page, which is the and vinyl in that um green basin or globe is the um is where we're looking to do infiltration. We're infiltrating stormwater that is captured in that basin. Um, and so that's one of the features where, um, sorry, I think I stepped back. So as you may or may not know, this site is challenging for a number of reasons. More poor soils, high groundwater, um, and to implement this new building, we need to cut the site down a little bit to get our ADA accessibility into the site for people to walk, easily the chairs, et cetera, to avoid the issues. So that requires us to cut the site in the areas where we would typically do stormwater infiltration. Um, because of this cutting, we're close to groundwater. Regulations require us to be at least two feet uh distance from the bottom of our system to estimate it sees some high groundwater. We're not able to do it where it shows us on the right side where it says cut. Um, we are gonna take the building as an opportunity to do infiltration because we're providing so much fill in that area that gives us that separation of groundwater. So I'll end with the building, but if we can go to the next, uh, back to
Hey, I'm gonna go back.
Yeah.
How much building we anticipate we'll be in?
Uh,
In terms of yard, yeah, um, boy, again, don't know the exact number. It's in our cost estimate, so I could get that for you.
No, just uh uh around around two thousand.
So it's not bounds, the cut and fill is not in bounds.
So, um, kind of breaking out of uh Steve's thing here, but we'll talk about that if we have time when we talk about the uh the phasing plan.
Okay.
But the the short answer is it's going to depend on what part of the project we're at. But the the short answer is it's going to depend on what part of the project we're at.
No, that's totally fine. Um so we started with our our green basin at the bottom, that's infiltrating water. As we go counterclockwise, we have a subsurface system right at the entrance. Then we have one as you go around the page, right there. Those are detention systems. They're aligned with poly material or plastic, so they don't infiltrate. So they're providing water quality and rate production. Um and those are picking up parking areas and some landscape and playground areas. And then as we continue around, we're again
Sorry, but no infiltration?
No infiltration, correct, correct. Because we are cutting, this is the area where we're cutting, close to groundwater, we can't infiltrate. We're we go against the regulations for infiltration. Similar, the new Flannery Field, we're providing another system that's providing water quality and rate attenuation. Um and then as we continue around the outside of the site, the gravel wetland, as we go past the wetland, we're designing what's called a gravel wetland, which has about two feet of gravel that is hitting groundwater constantly. Um and I pointed out at the commission hearing, there are a series of pipes that stand above the basin floor itself. Um the basin's a couple of feet deep. What that does is it captures the water, it pushes the water into those pipes, down to the gravel, which is underneath the layer of soil. And then that pushes that water out, so it's continually pushing water out as it enters from the top, pushes it through the gravel weapon. And then out, in this case, down to the south. This is similar to what was installed at the Public Safety Building that we did a number of years ago. So it's a very similar system that you have in town. And now for the building, so you just actually sense nicely, it's a spine where we're doing infiltration basically from the basin at Anvino Road through the building. So those three rectangles that you're looking at, those are concrete structures, um three to four up to six feet. Where we're routing the roof runoff from the building into those structures and that is then infiltrating into the ground beneath the building. Um these are free, I'm gonna say freestanding structures, but not structurally tied to the building. Um but they do have, but they are connected with pipes. Um and so this is where we're doing the majority of our work, infiltrating water so that we can meet the volume reductions that's required. It's part of the state town regulations for stormwater. Um so these are the workforces for the site.
Steve, on that point, I'm gonna jump ahead.
I was just gonna say if you could jump to that section.
Yeah, so this this is a section of the uh Stormtrap. This is one of the manufacturers we're looking at, Stormtrap. Um so the pieces are actually precast concrete. They're sitting on a gravel bed. Um and basically you're creating these large voids where the stormwater can collect and then it percolates down through the bottom of the gravel into the ground. Um and then I'm just gonna go ahead again, this next um slide we're gonna look at.
Slide is designed to handle that.
Correct. So as part of our design for for this site, we're using what's called PAST fourteen, which is not required by DPP. But understanding that we're having more tests, bigger storms, we designed to that higher storm event, so that interior storm is eight point six inches or so over twenty-four hours, which is much less than six to seven inches um that we're required to do. So we're we're going above and beyond, understanding where we are, climate class.
And is there emergency overflow, so if it doesn't like in the in the school?
Correct, we would have, so we have, these basins are interconnected with an outlet, but we would also have emergency overflows if there are those larger storm events.
And where do those go?
Those would go up to the, I'm gonna say, uh to the left, a page left out towards the gravel wetland. Um but essentially they would spill up to grade and then flow down the bus driveway down towards the basin, then we base that input.
And then I'll jump in and say, this is very similar to the way we deal with roof drains on the building. Um all of our drains actually have a primary drain and then an overflow drain. And the overflow drain is plumbed to, um we call it, some people call it a cow's tongue, basically a brass outlet on the bottom of the building. And if you see water coming out of that, you know there's a problem on the roof and you have to go up and deal with it. Same concept here. We have an outlet that spills out to grade. If you have water coming out of that, you know, okay, the system is, you know, at its max and it's kind of letting off steam basically.
And because we're under the building, um we understand sensitivity to that, so we're looking at providing a barrier on the top and the sides so that prevent moisture from getting out beyond the concrete. Um so we're we're looking at that for not only for all, but for the two systems in the building itself. That third one to the side of the buildings, outside of any structure, so um we wouldn't use it there unless there's a reason to. So
So I'm gonna jump into the building section. So this red line indicates the section that we're gonna be looking at. So again, we're cutting through the apple and kind of looking at it from the side. Um and because it's such a long section, it's cut into two pieces here that are, you know, sort of taped together with that red squiggly line. So the top drawing is the north courtyard. So this is a diagram. It's not exactly like this, but um it shows you very similar to what what it is that we're proposing. Again, as Steve said, the water's coming from the rain leaders from the roof. So this is the cleanest stormwater on that's that's, you know, you're gonna get on the site. Comes down into a water quality structure. That's a it's a maintenance point, but it also acts basically as a filter. So if there is any sediment or anything like it, that drops to the bottom of that that structure and that can be cleaned out periodically. Then it goes, um you know, horizontally and now we're connecting down to the bottom growing here. I I should not, I should gesture with my mouse so people online can see this. Um so now we're getting to underneath the gymnasium, there's a concrete infiltration system below there. It's uh distanced away from the structure that's holding up the building. Um we've had numerous meetings talking about, you know, how close can this be, how far away does it need to be? Um there is a service access port that we're going to plan. Um we're figuring out exactly what the detail of that is going to look like, um you know, visible in the building. But again, it's a it's a way of getting access to the system for periodic maintenance and inspection. Um and then we have another similar system in the courtyard, the south courtyard. Again, underneath all of the um the, you know, there's play equipment out there. There's some landscape features out there and some other stuff. So this is all happening below that. And again, there's a service access, there's a manhole, there's a way to get down there and inspect. Um and uh and get a vacuum hose down there if need be. So we've thought about the maintenance, we've thought about all of those things as well. And then finally, I have another. Say again.
Up here, that was that was the it's volumetric.
The depth, yeah.
They vary between three, three to six feet depending on where we are in the building and how much volume we need.
So it's not something you, your person, it's like, those are confined spaces.
These are confined spaces. We don't wanna put people in there, but we absolutely had to.
Do you need, will you need to get to any of that to maintain?
So we are providing access points for maintenance in the event that we do need to go in, yeah.
But it but it's only to put a vacuum
It's only to get you up to put a vacuum into
And that's the only maintenance this would ever need?
Correct.
You don't need to replace the gravel or anything?
No, it's similar to a system that you would put under a marble lot, same exact controls.
What type of vacuum are you talking about? Talking about a vacuum truck?
A vacuum truck, correct.
Well, how's the vacuum truck gonna get to to the area?
You bring a hose through. So this is another thing, a hose.
Yeah, just just in general, um when the MSBA says, okay, you can build a school with enclosed courtyards like this, they always want you to have an ability to get, you know, maintenance vehicles in there. So we have pairs of six-foot doors, you know, by seven foot tall, where you could actually get a pretty decent size. You're not gonna get a vacuum truck from there, but you could get, you know, lifts in there to work on the inside of the building. So all of that's been thought about as well. Um so this is kind of part and parcel of that same thought process.
Yeah, it's because this is an unusual, I'm gonna say unusual setup for a suburban school. We did speak with the building inspector and school facilities director about this before we went full design intuition to get there, understanding in uh in buying.
Oh, I remember the other point I wanted to make, just just to, so people can understand what's going on here. Get my arrow back. Um this is the first finished floor right here, which is at elevation forty. Um down here, this brown dashed line, that's the existing grade, so that's kind of the grade that Flannery Field is at. So the building down at the southern end, in the end closest to Anvino, is up in the air, you know, ten, twelve feet. So one of the other things that's great about this system is you're occupying that volume with something that you're getting some mileage out of in terms of, you know, work workhorse instead of just filling it with gravel. So that was kind of a nice win-win in that regard as well.
And where are the emergency spills on this diagram?
Um they don't show in this diagram because they're basically coming toward you. They're coming out of the page, basically, so you they would be coming out to the west.
And are they, can each one of these lots, or is it just the last ball that looks like you grabbed and feed all of them?
I think we have one coming out of the gymnasium.
Should happen at each, yeah, each system, yeah.
Um so, let's see, yeah, that was it for 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 slides. Um questions?
If you go back to the, yeah, that one, there was the, that was mine too. Um the hover left, the three colors there of the lines, what was that? That's the wetland. So that line right there is the wetland delineated. That was a pretty big observation last year. And then we're showing the fifty-foot in the, I guess it's green, and then the hundred-foot in the So those are the buffers that delineated. Okay, so what does the drainage look like going sort of that way? Uh so the the way we broke this out is that we have four design points. So top left corner where that wetland is, the bottom left, where the um the other isolated wetland is on that side, the wetland across the street is a design point. And then I think we have another design point up and that's
Very small here, yeah.
Yeah, it's a smaller one. So basically, we're
That's existing, right?
And that's existing, yeah. So uh those are the
That's what crossed the street.
Yeah, across Anvino Road, there's another wetland that's delineated, which you can see by that
Yeah, that up the line.
Does that drain there now?
It does drain there now.
And is, are there any volumetric or velocity changes of the system?
We're reducing rate and volume from everywhere.
Perhaps we could have our peer review engineer talk about um drainage and other issues.
Hey, Cory. Uh Jennifer Arno, professional engineer with the Horst and Witten Group. Um provided a letter to the planning board dated February 26, 2025, at Caris Zone and Stormwater Management. And we have some suggestions for the applicant that I think, and some questions about items that we couldn't find or for some clarification that I believe they will be able to address. But our biggest concern is really this subsurface infiltration system that's beneath the building. Um I can appreciate that they've done it homework on it, but it it doesn't give me a comforting feeling. Uh it's just putting in a large system that if it did fail, it would be very difficult to remove it. Like, well, these systems are frequently underneath parking lots. And if you have to rip open a parking lot, that's park, of course, it's what happens. Um but putting it right underneath the middle of the building uh is something that I struggle with. So I I feel like I don't even know more to say. The rest of it, like, yeah, the population's work, but they have giant system underneath the buildings. So that makes it so their their system works great because they're infiltrating with these six-foot-deep large concrete chambers. Um so I I don't know how they can adjust that. But I would like them to.
Is it possible to relocate?
Well, it's it's a very tight site, no, I it's it is very tight and I can appreciate that they have to have the detention um on the part that's cut because soil is not particularly good and groundwater is high. And so you know, I I don't know, I assume that they have worked hard at getting it where it is. Maybe they could put more on the south side of, you know, get it out of the building. The one that's in the courtyard, um I could be a little bit more accepting of it if there's a door that can actually get in equipment. But if they if they had to dig it up, you know, it's it's just gonna become, you know, it's gonna stay down in the ground and it's gonna be touched again. And um if it fails, there'll be an overflow and it'll just continue to discharge out. And it's clean water, infiltration systems work great. I am a fan definitely of infiltrating. Uh but it's always nice to know that if there was a problem, you can be careful.
Are there any other buildings or that we know that have something similar where it's underneath the building that we, they've been around for a while that?
Every time I've ever seen one, I've discouraged anybody from putting in. So I I have seen them being under the design, but I wouldn't see them open. But I have to
Yeah, so manager, so I've designed buildings. So these are are common in the city of Boston, given their tight size and, you know, zero lot lines. So I've designed a few buildings with underground systems. Um other colleagues, Mitch Engineering, has uh fifty-plus within the city of Boston. And to my knowledge, um no failures based on so I I'll share my uh design. It's it's at Fanning Hall, it's the support there. We have the underground system there, uh and that's just PVC pipes. And that's been there for at least ten years now.
And that's all built on fill?
And that's all built on fill.
My biggest concern is maintenance. And I have to say, this town is not wonderful as far as maintenance is concerned. And that is my biggest fear, that yes, this may work beautifully, it may be wonderful, but damn it, we don't maintain.
But will I have a facilities director?
We can only hope.
Would this be in his purview? I don't know, who's it for you? I mean, are there are there specific maintenance instructions in the operation and maintenance plan? And would and are there gonna be trained personnel for this maintenance?
Yes, and yes.
Okay. And maybe this cleaning roof runoff that shouldn't have a lot of leaves and debris and, you know, it's not gonna foils and stuff that will come from cars. It's just gonna make the roof, which is considered clean, um which definitely helps.
Is there a reason we can't relocate these like under the the bus drive and just be long-in?
There simply isn't enough area to provide that volume that we need underneath the bus drive itself.
Going all the way north?
Going all the way north. And also we have to contend with utilities that were basically where it says, the little box that says fill all the way down to the street. We have a series of utilities.
Those are the utilities there.
Water, sewer, gas, electric, that take out that area.
And in terms of grade to vary, this is a is a sort of a site prominence here. And we were able to get a small one in, but um this is a retaining wall and then the grade steps down basically back to existing more or less at that point. So you've sort of lost your cover after this curved line here. I guess if I may, um I'd like to inquire about the concept of failure. What is failure? What does failure look like?
In my mind, failure looks like that overflow pipe that you have are just discharging constantly. And so if they are discharging constantly and they're going towards that gravel wetland, that is definitely impacting all of the waters that are on that side because that's more water going in that direction than you're anticipating. So if if it doesn't infiltrate until it just keeps going out, it's just, it's gonna impact levels.
But if the only water um that is coming into that system is coming off the roof, you'll have a little bit of dust and a little bit of um a vegetative matter that gets caught in the water quality structure that gets cleaned out. I mean, it would take a very, very, very long time for the the volume of the galleys to fill up to a point where they're not functioning any.
If you left the one in the courtyard and you moved the one on the northern end all the way to the north with yellow, so you get it out of the building footprint?
Yeah, this
Go ahead.
Yeah, this, that was, well, I was gonna say, this, the yellow indicates cut, but the cut here is only about six inches to a foot, it's really very close to existing grade in this area here, so we're really not cutting that much at all. We looked at putting a unit in the north courtyard, but there just isn't enough room to do what it needs to do, get all of the other programmatic stuff on the top side in there, um, and still have enough area left over to really make it effective. And this is, you know, this is half-cut, half-fill in that location anyway.
And increasing the size of your detention system underneath your athletic fields, does, does that not, um?
Doesn't get us that infiltrate, you can't infiltrate there, it doesn't get us that volume, yeah.
Right, I get, you can't infiltrate, so you, cause what is your infiltration rate?
Point, what is it, two-seven?
Point-two-seven, so it's not
It's not robust.
It's not robust, so in reality, your discharge that you're discarding with point, with the infiltration is pretty minimal. Because it's point-two-seven, I mean, I guess that's, we're back to like, it's point-two-seven, hopefully in reality, that's gonna infiltrate inches per hour. It would be nice if in reality it does much faster than that, like, if you had nice sand, the best that we would do with a formalism in a stormwater management handbook is eight-point-two-seven inches per hour, you know, just goes right in there like sand. Sand volume goes faster than that, but, um, and if you get to clay, it's really not, you know, just sitting. So the point-two-seven inch per hour is pre-slaw. And so therefore, their whole system is filling up and eventually kind of working its way through to discharge basically acting like a detention system because it only infiltrates a little bit. So we have two neighbors here, I want to ask you, um, how long is that up there today? What for what?
Um, so
Could I be a neighbor?
So, as I said, for a river, if we pull a circle, I'm less than a hundred yards from my backyard, I throw a baseball on the flanders field in my backyard. The wetlands that surround the house today, because of our new neighborhood, my neighbors, with the exception of me, already have water. Now, I've raised this concern with them before that with the runoff coming from the, the access road, and any excess runoff that doesn't go into the ground, it's gonna find its way into the wetlands. And it's gonna constantly grow those wetlands and infiltrate now into our homes, that is my biggest concern. Another issue is the lack of greenery that is there right now. Is, I'm not seeing enough greenery to go up to block the trucks that are gonna be turning there, the buses and all that stuff. And we're stating that we're not concerned about leaves and debris getting into the system. I'm advocating for more trees, higher trees, more greenery, because I want that blocked from my quiet enjoyment. So, these are the, that, this is what I'm representing, my concern, and I've been a part of these meetings for the past year-plus, and I feel that a lot of us have expressed some of these similar concerns as well.
I, I have a question. Is that the, the full area of the school, the footprint of the land that we have to work with?
Yes.
No, there's no extra. You know, it, it's same as when Curtis Estates was being permitted, et cetera, et cetera, and a certain amount of Curtis Estates cur, the property was put into conservation, and three acres behind Haveli School was supposed to be put aside for the expansion of Haveli School, what happened to that?
Not something we were aware of.
I was aware of that.
The land went into, there was, the land that was supposed to go into conservation went into conservation.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
I understand, but three acres of that was supposed to be for the enlargement of Haveli School.
I think that's what the deed ever said.
Well, then, I'm gonna talk to somebody tomorrow to find out what happened, because that's what it was set up to be. It is, what is the land like behind it? All its left?
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is all west, we wouldn't be able to build on it anyway, it's a
Alright.
It's just your question, I was gonna be helpful.
Yeah, and twice.
So behind Curtis Estates, um, so I'm on, I had bought Curtis Estates behind that, so I guess it'd be to the, on top there.
The north.
Um, and we have three or four houses there that gave water constantly, and it was never like that poor Curtis Estates was there, so echoing Chris's concern, like, if you've said it's gonna be less, well, I've, what was your concern, Steve? Uh, less velocity, less
Volume.
Volume. Um,
Volume.
I think it hoped that's the case, I don't remember what, I wasn't involved with Curtis Estates planning and such, but um, we have more water than we ever had in the neighborhood since the Curtis Estates was developed, so. However we mitigate that, then I am all for it, and your point on more greenery, anything there, there's a lot of trees cut down, obviously that contributed to it. So, however we're mitigating the stormwater runoff and all that, then terrific, but that's a concern I have.
And I'll just add that, like, Flannery Field as it stands today absorbs all of the water as it is. So therefore, we don't have that, unfortunately, his kids wouldn't have seen the problem because of us. But once this school is in place and Flannery Field is gone, the, it's now our problem, and that is the concern.
You said Flannery Field, okay, yeah.
Oh, that's okay.
Flannery Ground is being replicated and it's
It's a different spot.
Yeah.
It's a
It's a product, yeah.
Yeah.
So I have two questions.
But in terms of the site, it's there, it's, it's a factor in the stormwater profile, I'd say.
So I have two questions, one, one question, you, you know, say that there's gonna be trained personnel is to do this, who, who is, would you object to a condition for an annual certification from a professional engineer that's, you know, given to the planning board? That this is, that it's been inspected and maintained? That, that's one, and the second question starts leading to, can you talk us through the order in which these drainage systems are gonna be constructed during construction? Because he, you have to handle all the water on the site during construction. It's not just afterwards that it has to meet rate and volume, it's during construction as well. And that was a problem on Curtis Estates, so can you talk us through how this drainage system is gonna be constructed at different times, and there, and, and how it goes along with the phasing and the construction end of it?
Absolutely. Let's move on to phasing plans. Now, um, I'll start out by apologizing because these phasing plans are actually, um, some of the diagrams are from the, the old site plan in the front, so you may notice a couple of details that are a little different, but the general idea and the building and all of those other items are, are the same as what we're looking at now, the only real difference is the reconfiguration of the front of the site here. So, um, I'm gonna just walk through it in terms of generals, um, the first phase is mobilization, site clearing, and setting up of temp utilities. The existing building is going to stay in operation, unfortunately, some of the existing utilities are underneath where the new building's going, so we have to, to basically create, uh, temporary utilities to keep the old building functioning. Um, we're going to create a temp playground, this, this is basically, you know, the, the school has agreed that this is really gonna be putting a fence around the existing, uh, lawn, and it's gonna be a play space, there isn't gonna be a playground there. Um, we're gonna create some temporary parking to, uh, put back the paper spaces that we're losing here, um, so we'll have the same number of onsite spaces. Um, so the orange areas are areas that are involved in the contractor's, uh, work area. Wherever you see a fence around here, um, it's not shown on this drawing just because of the, the, uh, scale is, is not appropriate, but assume that you're going to have, um, uh, erosion control and, uh, sedimentation control around all of those borders. So the gray areas that are shown on here are ideas of where either laydown space could be, or where uh, stockpile could be for soils at various times, um, or places where temporary, uh, stormwater basins could be located. The, we can't get super specific about that, you know, we've had some discussions since the concom that we will need to get more specific than we are now, but at the end of the day, it's the contractors' means and methods, um, it's up to them how they're going to occupy the site and do the project. They have to obviously, um, take care to, uh, uh, follow the, the means and methods and the, the SWIP, the, uh, stormwater protection planning, that's gonna be, you know, by law. So, uh, second phase, uh, is really where the building gets constructed, um, the gray areas are, you know, contractor parking, contractor laydown areas. And again, as I say, um, if they want to stockpile, uh, soils on site, they would be there, obviously, they would be subject to the DEP regulations and the SWIP. Um, two-point-two, this is fast-forwarding to the first summer of construction, so the summer of next year. Um, there are some, uh, underground stormwater, this piece here actually is turned ninety degrees, so this is gonna look a little different, this is another one of those um, out-of-date pieces, but, um, the basic idea is to get some of the stormwater underground work done in that first summer when there's nobody at the school, and we can kind of, in humble, this entrance, we'll still obviously maintain a way for fire, at least to get in and out of the site and everything, but, um, we'll have those temporary, uh, activities going on. So site work happening in the back, some site work happening in the front, and the building is continuing along construction. Once that summer is over, we put all of this, that, this site back together, and we get back to the temporary condition um, for the existing school and continue building. And that's kind of coming up really to the end of the building construction at that point. And I should say, at that point, the underground infiltration on the building is going to be operational once we get roof on and get, um, plumbing working, so those pieces will become then functional at that point in time. Now, we kind of get to the tricky part where we have to have temporary parking in the back that's gonna be built over the base of the future Flannery Field, so they'll be laying down a gravel basin, they'll be building a temporary parking uh, on top of that, and this is to accommodate the, um, the buses and cars that need to park while the new building is, uh, in use as the old building is coming down. So then we have another, uh, piece of construction while the building is being abated and demolished that summer. They're building, uh, this parking lot here, you know, again, that's slightly older version of the site plan, but same idea, uh, with the, uh, the double-rope parking that we have there now. And then, uh, using that same, uh, circulation nomenclature that we used on the previous circulation diagrams, we've got, uh, this is really kind of opening September twenty twenty-seven, um, while the, uh, site plan, you know, the building's down, and now we're building out the rest of the site plan here. We've got a way of getting, uh, temporary cars in here, um, for, for drop-off and pickup, and then buses are going to start using the bus lane. But at that point, it will be, uh, you know, a two-lane street for buses to come around, drop off and pick up, and then exit the way they came in, so again, temporary measures. This kind of stuff happens on construction sites all the time, the contractors are used to managing traffic, putting up temporary signage, you know, all of those things will be, uh, their responsibility. And then, finally, as we've gotten the, um, the site plan in the front of the school in shape, we can start using the front part of the site as it was designed, um, the back part, you know, this is, this could be a very, very short duration of only a few weeks where the, uh, the buses will have to do a turn, we'll do a, you know, a loop that's wide enough for them to make a turn in the back, and then get back out, uh, the front. All of that's happening while Flannery Field is being finished up. And then the final look, this is really sort of the spring following the, the last, uh, winter construction, where the last seeding happens, those final trees go in around the field, and the, uh, the whole site plan becomes, uh, operational the way it was intended. So, you can see, there's a lot going on here, um, getting back to, um, Karen's question, um, in terms of what's gonna happen site-wise, uh, for the temporary measures for around, uh, stormwater.
I mean, I think, I think, Jennifer, you've got it, uh, strong, I think, uh, one of the important pieces to understand is using the underground system in the building, under the building, that will take a lot of, uh, that runoff uh, and potential issues, um, once that building is up, and I think the, um, and I'm just gonna get that, because we do need to provide a little bit more information about the temporary, uh, conditions. Um, and so, the next summer in front of you, ultimately, you have that fleshed out for you, and we have a better discussion about it.
I would say the stormwater plan as you phases in, right? So, as Karen said, and we've mentioned this before, pretty many times, where everybody said, well, when we're done, it'll be fine, right? Because during construction, people get inundated with stormwater, so you gotta have a plan all the way through it. And if you're gonna phase it in, you should have a plan to choose.
My biggest concern, stormwater notwithstanding, is safety. I've worked in a school where they added on, and I had a kid almost lose his arm because something fell on. So, I know that this building is in front, uh, the existing one from what you're building. I need to know and to be totally assured that this is totally enclosed, no one can be in there. Do you know, I want it, you know, it's gonna be fenced off, because it will be, um,
A nuisance.
An attractive nuisance. That's the fact, you have children in there that are trying to burn with all the scratching bamboo on. You know, and I, I have to tell you, I have no problem with that, but I'm just telling you, that's my problem. So somehow, some way, you have to make sure that this attractive nuisance is safe, because little kids love that stuff.
Yeah, so, um, to respond to that directly, the fence line that we're looking at here is a six-foot-high construction fence with the scrim on it, that's our standard specification now. Um, we, if, if people wanted, they often put controlled viewing cords in that, so the little kids can actually see what's going on, and it satisfies the curiosity, so they don't wanna get over the fence. Um, that's a, that's a device that, that is sometimes done. That scrim also helps, uh, cut down dust, uh, you know, spreading through, through wind and so forth. Um, during construction, the contractor is required to have an active dust control patrol, basically. The whole time, there's open, uh, soil on the site. And if it's summertime and it's dry, that guy just drives around the truck with the water all day long, spreading water on, on the soil.
Are you going to have someone on-site monitoring this twenty-four-seven?
Not twenty-four-seven, but all the time that there's workers on the site, the contractor is required to have a superintendent, and then, uh, the owner's project manager, who's actually on the line here, will also have somebody, uh, monitoring the activities as well.
Who's, who's everybody anyways?
No, I know situations where they've got a trailer, and they hire some kids to, uh, be here overnight to make sure that the way of youth don't get involved.
And then there's cameras and stuff to monitor that?
I mean, you really have to monitor stuff.
Are there gonna be cameras to monitor some of that stuff, and some of the big construction sites we have, they have to go, they have to resort to putting cameras in to, to keep their kids out.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's certainly something, if it were to develop into a problem, that's something that would definitely
I would nip it in the bud and make sure that it's already in place, don't wait for something awful to happen.
I mean, typically, we do have a site camera, um, which it, it does a lot of things, but it records the progress of the construction. It's something people can dial into if they wanna see what's happening, you know, it's a, it's a accessible from a public website. So people will often, you know, if, you know, if you're So people will often, you know, if, you know, if you're thinking about going on the site, you have to realize, oh, I'm gonna be on camera all the time.
If you're sixteen years old with nothing else to do.
So where is the con, where is the contractor parking gonna be?
The, these little uh rectangles down here are contractor parking. Um, and then they can also park alongside.
I mean, it hardly seems like it's enough parking for all the trades that have to work on this building simultaneously. I mean, I, I'm understanding that and I think that's an issue. We definitely wanna see more on the drainage and how it meets, how it's gonna meet the SWIP. We wanna see that SWIP. We're gonna condition that we wanna see the SWIP prior to submit it to the EPA. And we want it, we want a couple of weeks review period so our engineer and members of the planning board can look at it. Because the SWIP is an important document that, you know, that has to be catered to this site.
How close is the old building to the new building that's being constructed? Does it look like?
At at the closest point, it's about twenty five feet.
So.
But we've, I mean, not to minimize, but we do this all the time.
I understand that, but this is my neighborhood.
Understood.
So I'm gonna ask for the neighbor here if you would consider adding more greenery to the backside of that, of that what's Curtis Estates, please. Would you also suck up all the water?
That, I, I made that comment, I appreciate you echoing that and thank you for addressing my questions. And I guess what I wanted to answer, address the question earlier is more so it appears that kind of this greenery is gonna be in place until twenty twenty seven, final construction is done. So everything I just talked about, about stormwater during construction is, I feel that re- adding these trees and these greenery early enough will help with that. So I just wanna plant that seed if that's something that we can add to the discussion.
Well, that's a construction issue that they're probably, I don't know, but it treats what we do now. Right, so there's an important issue from Curtis Estates that we learned too is that people forget about that during construction. Oh, it's gonna work at the end because the grass is gonna be there. But you know what? During construction, it has to work too.
Yeah, right.
We worked a lot. And Toll Brothers.
And Toll Brothers, yes, we we worked a lot. Every project we worked self, you know, that's why it's worth your way, yeah.
Um. So if I may, Madam Karen, um, just I'll, I'll point out that, let's get my arrow back here. On the Curtis Estates side of the property line, there is a pretty solid um line of mature uh evergreen trees.
Yeah.
So those are pretty tall and they have a a decent understory that goes down pretty close to the ground because they're evergreens. Um, we're planting on our side of the line a pretty solid line of a mixture of evergreen and deciduous plantings there. Uh, we do have the um the constructed uh wetland here as well. Um, you know, eventually, that's gonna have wetland plants in it. Um, so that's another sort of visual buffer. But what we were trying to do on our side of the line is really fill in that understory so that we have the complementary, the existing trees on the neighbor's property plus what we're doing on our side of the property.
So unfortunately, if you're looking at any project that we work at around town, um, there's always a little bit of space where it's not perfect. You know, but um as long as you don't take down those evergreens, which we need to soak up all that water over there.
Yeah, I mean, they're not on our property, so we're not touching them.
Those trees will go in, I mean, you gotta, you gotta basically clear the site, build there, right?
Uh, yes, but thank you for reminding me. So the site work that happens around the building is going to happen before the site flips to the demolition and site construction phase on the other side. So all of that stuff can be put in, you know, the, probably would be, I'm gonna guess, the spring that the building opens. So a full growing season before the end of the project.
That's twenty twenty seven, spring in twenty.
Yeah, spring twenty seven, spring twenty seven. I mean, it also may be that they try to get some things in the fall before, you know. Cause there's all of that site work that has to happen.
Get all the years working there and done first.
Yeah. But yeah, here you allow them clear more detail on the phasing plan and um you want the ability to look at SWIP that is customized to this site.
We do. So one, one of some other um things that I'm not sure that you are aware of or hopefully you've looked at plans about, um irrigation. That the Flannery Field is currently irrigated. They are allowed to keep that irrigation system, but they can't increase the area that is being irrigated. So that's, that's, that's allowed under the, under the policy. Um, they, they do need another waiver for the planting. Um, well, to actually keep some invasive trees on the site. And I think it's a good idea that they keep, I mean, abutting the um the east side and the south, there's a fair amount of Norway naples. They're invasive tree, but they're in good shape. So I think they need landscaping to the north and to the east. So I think it's worthwhile to grant that waiver so that they can keep those existing trees. Now maybe we just condition that they have to go through this.
Take all the bittersweet out.
And take all the bittersweet out. But I think, I think those trees should stay.
And I've heard you just put the whole job, I've heard that.
So, so can we go back to irrigation? Um, so you just said, that's just on the field, so how does the rest of it get irrigated? How does plantings, all that stuff?
Well, there can be, probably a water truck to start with.
Yeah, 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 during the establishment period, it would be trucked in water. Yeah.
And then?
Uh, so they're drought tolerant native uh plantings. They're selected specifically to be, you know.
So the entire landscape won't need any water.
I mean.
In rain.
The, the water that comes with natural rainfall and their dry periods obviously.
That's what I'm asking, there's no irrigation.
There is no, there's no irrigation except on the, this four feet. And I will also point out that with a new irrigation system, it will be, forget the exact percent, so don't quote me on this, but it's something like seventy percent more efficient than the system that's there now.
Is Flannery Field being expanded or it's gonna be the same size?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's slightly shorter and slightly wider than the initial field, but it's uh same area.
Got it.
It's terrace, right?
It is currently grass. We are considering doing uh artificial turf. And one of the things that we were just looking at recently was the um, is there any difference in the permeability of those two systems? And there isn't. They're essentially considered the same in terms of uh the permeability.
And wouldn't.
Maybe don't use irrigation.
You would still need a little bit of irrigation, so um to, to do a properly designed uh artificial field, you have to have a water source to wash the, the grass every so often. But it's not like, you know, hence.
So. It's a lot less water.
Yeah, a lot.
Sure.
Um, Collins just came in from D P W today. They'll have to work on addressing those. They need to study the drainage going into Anvital Road. There will be an offsite, there's offsite utilities that have to be done for this project as well. There's an offsite sewer line that has to be done. Um.
Can you look up, say drainage going into Anvital?
Yeah, some of this, some of this drainage goes into existing system in Anvital Road.
I thought, I thought we were just saying, that's, it's going through wetlands across the street and then these other locations.
Some of it in the southern part of it goes into Anvital.
Then has to be sewer, because there's a good pipe there. No, they're gonna have to, a new sewer pipe is being constructed as part of this project. You know, from this project, it'll go from here up to, to uh.
The intersection.
The intersection uh where um.
Where they all meet together.
Where they all meet together.
Man, man.
Man, 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 have.
Yeah, yeah.
Black and white.
Yeah, children.
Oh, yes.
Up there will be basically all the, all the needs changed up there, so.
Always stuff.
So that's, I'm sorry, the, the stormwater's going into the sewer system?
Yes, they're bang, they're bang, they're bang.
No, 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 no.
Right, we, we were talking about stormwater and then to sewers, so I'm just, just trying to make sure I understand.
I, I was.
So there's an existing catch basin system in, in vinyl that we're draining. But we're not draining more water than it's going down. We're actually draining less.
Less, correct.
How much less?
So. So, uh, I, it's less, I, I don't know the exact.
I, I'd like to know what the change is here around.
But it's less. Yeah, no, it's so uh, I could put you to sleep with our stormwater report, I mean that, in a funny way.
I need you to summarize.
I can um, we do have a summary table there.
This is the table.
But just to clarify, we, there are, uh, there is a connection at the bottom, uh, close to Anvital that connects into an existing eighteen inch drain pipe. And so some of our new overflows connect to that pipe. And the D P W is asking us specifically to check the capacity of that eighteen inch existing line to make sure that what we're putting into it isn't creating an overcapacity issue for that drainage pipe. So that's what D P W is asking.
It overflows from the, just infiltration systems under the building?
It, eventually it does, but the basin that's at the bottom of, uh, closest to Anvital, we have connections into the eighteen inch line that's there. So it's, when everything eventually gets to the basin and then that overflow goes into the eighteen inch, the town wants to make sure we're not creating another issue.
You're already using catch basin there, right?
There is a catch basin there, that's correct, that's correct. And then the, and then the sewer, sorry, can you go ahead?
Only does it then go to that what, across the street?
It goes, right.
From the closure of the system, it goes into that one?
It goes into the, yeah, correct. They're all interconnected.
So there's not a lot of capacity that they're worried about? It's just to make sure that the existing pipes?
It is, yeah, so we need to understand what's flowing to that eighteen inch pipe upstream. I don't know what that drainage area is yet.
Do you have something to offer, Mr. Bealton?
I was just curious, are they putting defenders on these before they go into the generators?
We're doing uh similar type of systems that, yes, that take out sediment and, correct. Not necessarily defenders. And then if I may, just continue to add the sewer. So we were asked, the president was asked to increase the existing force maintenance in Anvital a size another inch. So we're providing that design along with connection points from the school all the way up to the next intersection.
Yeah, all the.
Just kidding, yeah.
So there'll be a three inch sewer made of, going, going in. Uh, from the existing two, two, two and a half inch. Right, Janet, do you have anything else that you think that we need to add?
Uh, no, my one other thing just to think about is there's definitely a comment about making sure that the abutters aren't obstructed use or something. And to, they have plantings all the way around, but it says protection of adjoining premises against detrimental and offensive methods of utilizing the site. So it's an existing use, I, I don't think it's detrimental, but is the plantings that are around the perimeter um meeting that, that kind of expectation? So that, I, I wasn't sure from looking at, they definitely have plantings as existing and they're adding um more, but I couldn't tell if it was, if it met that criteria.
And it blows with dogs.
Yeah, 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 there's a lot of trees coming out. But that's, that's how, that is how these projects work. And we, we've worked on many that have the existing school in place while they're building a, a new school and it, it's tricky and the phasing is tricky. And the stormwater during that time is something to be focused on and understand, so.
So you should hope for dry winter?
Always, three years, three years, okay, three years.
It'll come in twenty twenty nine.
Yeah, but the planning board takes stormwater during construction very seriously. We will shut you down if filthy water's going offsite. And if, you know, if that is happening and water keeps going offsite, we will shut you down.
We don't want to.
Ask Toll Brothers, they are shut down, they were shut down.
And I still think it just gets more rain than any town in all of Massachusetts. The gods are in Toll Brothers, it's like, it's raining again.
It's overflowing again, yes.
You have anything else?
Yeah, so we're gonna need a continuance. They have indicated they're going to be giving us revised plans by February twenty eighth. So bearing with that, I got um March twenty seventh at seven o'clock.
I hope to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing, recycling administrator review and stormwater permit for the New Calhoun Elementary School until March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five at seven o'clock P M. And to continue the town for actual filing with the town court until April eleventh, twenty twenty five.
Please, second, second, would you like your school to hold favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. No, it's like, challenge five months. This is words, no, so like. Okay. Everybody. What I got?
But like, to allow me to, with all this information, we need the town's squad. Give me the shade of items for your company and so we could, you know, V N A's.
Okay. I hope to set the planning board meeting minutes January third, twenty twenty five.
Hold the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Counting.
Counting.
Go ahead, go.
I hope to put the file in their folders. Um, number twenty five, oh, seven, three, four, oh, an amount of two thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Here we do for eight, oh, three, hundred and twenty. Number two, five, oh, seven, two, four, five, an amount of three hundred ninety two dollars, five cents. Here we do of three forty in a row. Number two, five, oh, seven, two, four, six, an amount of one thousand eighty five dollars to the initial here review of Twenty One Central Avenue, phone for the arena. Number two, five, oh, seven, four, one, four, an amount of hundred and nine dollars for registration at the annual citizens planner training collaborative conference, March twenty twenty five. Number two, five, oh, seven, four, four, six, an amount of three thousand thirty dollars for here reviews and hearing attendance regarding the one thirty two Hornet Stetson Road, Inlee Middle School project.
Second.
Hold favor, aye.
Really?
Yep.
Not to our ever favorite M B T A community's update. We've got a pointless Tibet pretty sold.
There is, there is no update with, uh, we got the letter from the state at the end of Van Nuys Day. Of course, they're still reviewing it, you know, so we've had a complete application in August twenty sixth. This is coming up on six months.
And now they're having a public hearing about it?
Well, it, it's as many as sense. Well, because they, they didn't implement the regulations legally. So, you know, so, you know, it's, it is what it is. And so, I mean, everything's gonna be the same. They're just using the same regs and, you know, it's, you know, they have new timeframes for the communities that didn't comply. They have to spend action plans and by today, then they have to be in compliance by like July thirteen, fourteen. But, you know, they don't seem to be making any progress. Um, people who are trying to comply and submitted their applications a long time ago.
We should give brownie points for it, we should give something.
Well, we're, we're still, we're in interim compliance, so that's, that's what the letter, I said we're golden, right? Yeah.
And then we have all the.
We're not SWIP.
No, we're not SWIP then.
No, we're not SWIP yet, no.
I mean, at one point, we should probably just, oh, we think we're approved, bye.
You said a nice word.
Constructed approval, we, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
Same thing they say.
No, we have the A S O, which was, I did this in conservation, uh, which was a lot above the school. Um, and this must have stuck a little bit on around that, uh, it'll probably come to our attention, something like that. Um, I mean, is that? I mean, is that?
I did C P C and um. The the fish pan has been put on hold. That's the land that's over on Black Road. So nobody's done much of anything about that. And. We're still working with basketball courts and sale was in for money. For for their um building for sure. So.
What?
Hospital or not.
That's. You're not approving PC money for that?
It's affordable housing. It's affordable house. I know. But and and then.
The adoption of a affordable housing.
Carol's piece of land.
Who?
Carol O.
No.
No.
Will come.
No. Uh. We're not talking about that, no.
Uh yeah.
And then I have another thing. I had been to traffic rules and I did ask about the train and all of that. I did.
And they said.
And they said, and I've watched myself, okay? The problem is, when you're on Gannett and Henry Turner Good Road, if the train is going too slowly through that intersection. It backs everything up. And then too, when you're coming out from Gannett Road and some character is in the middle lane to take a left. Okay, and he screws everybody up on that.
He just, they park there.
Because whatever. But at any rate, um it is really the train itself and how fast it goes through that intersection. But I, but they they stop. East west first.
Yeah.
And they let north, then they stop towards south. Then they let north south.
I think it has to do with.
Then then they let her.
I know.
Actually, they're parking for free in the playground parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So so that's what.
I did ask. I did.
Thank you, you did.
I know, I appreciate.
Yeah, thank you for us.
I did ask. And it was, the MBTA is like much of that, so, yeah.
So our planning reports about student health better?
Well, you remain very busy. We have a lot of projects. Um people think they're gonna get approved faster than they are to be. Um and we got a new stormwater permit today for another pool in Curtis Estates.
Yeah, it's not yet promised.
I know this, yeah, I know it's not here. So I mean.
We can fill that pool with the old stuff.
With with the old schools, yeah. I mean, you can require a public hearing for it, or I can do it as administrative review.
Just enough.
Should have said no on the first one.
Should have said no to the first one.
Yeah. Go to water shop.
So I'll do it by administrative review?
Let it go.
A pool?
But it's still gonna be, it's still gonna handle some water.
Okay, so. Okay, it's gonna be, and this one came in.
So it just gonna be just.
It's gonna be peer reviewed. This one came in and they've added more verminous than they were approved for. So I told the engineer he had to account for that. So it's, you know, and he's he's accounting for it, um but it will be peer reviewed, et cetera.
Okay.
People like pools, constituent, I guess.
Yoshi is so far away.
It's so far away.
Tell us about people.
It's cold.
It's cold.
It's a cold, I like it. That's true.
Yeah, cool.
That's true.
It was like.
And other things that.
So I mean, that's on, you know, I think the next meeting is gonna be big one for your zoning. And town meeting is April fourteenth, so everybody should be planning on um attending, attending that. But I mean, I'll have to go back to advisory board beginning of March and public select board once we get the um, they do by law. Uh finalized as it's going in warrant.
Okay. That's.
What did you say?
In the fourteen.
Um the meeting on the twenty seventh or twenty eighth of March is second, it'd be uh, but well, I'd get a letter for that as you're gonna be.
Oh, no, no, no. This is yours, this was your notification.
This was it?
This was it.
Okay.
So you actually gotta keep track of that.
Twenty seven, we're there this way.
The other page rolls. But we post the planning board, you have to keep track of the planning board agenda. We post the planning board agenda Friday before the meeting.
Okay, but that that would be something that I could.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
The planning year is open to the.
Well, it's a whole, I'm gonna see the plan that you guys are asking for.
Yeah, oh, no, every this year is open.
Very.
You're welcome anytime.
Anytime.
That's all I have. No, I, I'll leave a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hold a favor?